One, two, three. Just.
Really? Oh my God. Oh my God.
Meeting called to order. Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for what you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Here.
Councillor Getchea.
Here.
Councillor Janess.
Here.
Councillor Leahy.
Here.
Councillor Mercier.
Here.
Councillor Noon.
Yeah.
Councillor Robinson.
Here.
Councillor Rourke.
Here.
Councillor Scott.
Here.
Councillor Yum.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any memorials tonight? Here on none, we now go to two mayor's business, communication, remote Zoom participation, motion to accept and place on file by Councillor Drinkwater, second by Councillor Getchea, on favor, see I oppose, say no, the ice have it, motions carry. Tonight, the major part of the meeting tonight is on the public hearing on the budget, and we'll start at seven, so we do have a few minutes. I'm planning to have the, as usual, have the public speak during the in-favor session and the opposed session, but I would like to discuss with the council members right now, since we have a few minutes, to see how you would want to approach this meeting tonight. Councillor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have done a thorough overview of this year's budget, as well as the five-year capital improvement plan. A lot of thought went into both, in my personal opinion. We could sit here for a week and make cuts, which, no doubt, other councillors feel to be the proper way to cut a little more out of this budget, but we must choose raising the bar and address challenges by making strategic investments, because that's what I heard from every member of this council when they asked for better streets, cleaner neighborhoods, equal pay and compensation for employees comparable to surrounding communities, and to improve public safety. So if you want it, you have to pay. It's called an investment. It's called raising the bar. It's called you can't have it both ways. This budget was presented to address council goals. We're not here to hurt anybody. We're here to do a job to see if there's any fat in the budget. I know that there are councillors that have questions and suggestions, things that I probably overlooked, so I welcome their input. I would suggest, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that we recognize the public and let them all speak first, and then go through each department, not line item by line item, and ask if any of the council members have questions or concerns with that department, then move to the next department. I believe there are about 29 departments. I would even support going over the 10 o'clock rule for the sake of getting the job done and not prolonging this duty, and I'm asking if we could try to work together to get this done, and I put this in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Councillor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I believe we owe it to the public to go line by line. After going through this, I spent many, many hours, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and even today, looking at the budget and looking at Munis' reports, and I thank the auditor for providing that at the end of May, so that we could actually scrub every single line item. I do believe we can have better services and still make cuts. I do believe that there are line items in here that have some fat in them that can be cut. I think, I believe that each department, we owe it to every department, had to come up here and justify their spending, and whether they did it with the CFO or not, I think that we owe it to everybody when we're asking for a 5.5% increase in taxes, whether we're for better streets, whether we're for trash pickup on time, or any of that. That doesn't negate that we're in that stage, and I just think that, as a councillor, we put in the effort to review all of this, and we deserve the right to look through it, and that's all I'm saying, and I don't disagree with the fact what Councillor Mercier is saying, that we all do want better things, but I do think, within this budget, we can make some drastic cuts that can actually help the residents afford what they need to afford. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Rourke.
First of all, second, Councillor Mercier's motion, and secondly, Mr. Mayor, I believe that both suggestions by Councillors Mercier and Getchea can be achieved by going department by department. When we get to a certain department, if there are things within, you know, bring up the department head and ask questions, I think that it'd be an informative way to go for the public and questions that the council may have, so I would, I would second Councillor Mercier's motion. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we take a vote on the, on the motion? Just, just for clarification, Councillor Mercier, when you said that go have the department by department talk on the department, do you mean one by one, each department, all 29 departments?
Yes.
Or can, or leave it open if somebody have a question on a certain department?
Right, absolutely.
They can call up that department. It doesn't necessarily mean that all the department head.
For example, if you, if you have a, if you recognize a particular department, let's say the law department, if nobody has a question, we move to the next department. I don't know how difficult that would be.
Sure.
I would say let the public speak first, then open it up, department by department, 29 of them, wastewater, there's some departments that are probably extra that you have to separate, like DPW, you have administrative, you've got land and buildings, you have other, you know, departments within DPW, you separate that. If someone has a question, fine, if someone, if we do not have any questions, move to the next. I don't know how difficult that is, but I think it's strategically appealing. That's how we've done it in the past. I'm not saying people can't ask questions or make a suggestion or a motion or whatever, fine, absolutely.
Sure.
And might I also add that I know the budget is going up, I know taxes are going up, I know where we're going with this, and if this happens to pass, I do want to see improvements. I do want people to say this is a cleaner city because of it. I want to see, I, I'm very upset to see a department that had eight employees, and now through retirement and attrition and death and this, that, and the other, and there's three, and there's three people doing the job at eight, and then we, as a council, complain that this isn't getting done, that isn't getting done, that's not fair to that department that have lost five people and they have to do the work of eight people. That's not fair. So if we, if it's going to cost us money to make the department whole, that's what I want to do, and I want to see it reflected out in the street, in the, in the potholes being fixed, in the streets being cleaned, and, and then I'll be happy, but this is the way, this is my motion, so.
Sure. And thank you, councillor, and just for everybody on the same page, we're not changing the way we conduct the public hearing, that the public does get to go first and speak first, before the council members have a discussion, and during which time we could ask the department heads, if need be, to come forward and answer any questions the council members may have.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
That was seconded by Councillor Rourke already, so Mr. Clerk will do a roll call.
Okay. Councillor Chow.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
No.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy.
Yes.
Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yum.
Yes.
Ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We do have 10 minutes before seven o'clock, before the published meeting. Should we, can we start 10 minutes early, or should, or, or do you have something, say, Mr. Manager, through Mr. Baldwin? Presentation, you want to take the time to do the presentation? Absolutely, great idea, yeah, absolutely. Mr. Manager, through you too, Mr. CFO.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, councillors and members of the public. Before we get started on the, the public hearing for the appropriation order, there are a number of other business items on the agenda, all of which are financial, financially related. The one which we have a presentation prepared is related to the capital plan, so it's important to note that the capital plan is financed in a different way than the operating budget. There is a relationship between the two. The debt service for capital improvements is funded through the operating budget, but the way that we finance capital projects is by selling debt, and so if, if LTC can call the presentation up on the screen, before the city council this evening is a loan order. The loan order is in the amount of $12.9 million. That aggregate total is a proposal to fund the, the projects listed on the, the screen before you. Those are categorized in infrastructure, public safety, community maintenance, and vehicle replacement. You can see, if you can see, on the list, some of these projects are related to streets, sidewalks, bridges, hard infrastructure, as it sometimes is known, as well as building improvements to city, city buildings, and project-related improvements.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Baldwin, could you direct us what page on the, on the six, 700 pages that we have here, what pages are on?
So the, the project list is on page 583 in the budget, councillor.
Thank you.
The presentation itself will not follow along page for page with the budget, but for the audience and for the council, the capital plan section of the budget is section number five in the book that you all have received. So the aggregate total is $12.9 million. That is the amount in the loan order that is proposed before the council, and we'll, we'll dive into some of the projects to give examples of the, the strategy for financing capital, as well as some of the specific projects. So roadway improvements in FY '23 is a good example to use to highlight the administration's strategy to leverage state and federal funding sources when financing capital, capital repairs. The example used in paving is the Chapter 90 formula, funding formula from the straight, the state. So the city receives $1.8 million as an apportionment from the state of Mass, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, rather, and rather than many communities who use that as their only funding source for, for paving, the city adds on top of that our own money that we bond, $3 million, so that we're able to maximize in a year's time the amount of paving work that is done. So we have increased that amount in the budget as compared with prior years. For many years, that number that we matched from city funds was $1.35 million. Aside from just the general roadways, there is also ADA funding proposed in the capital plan to do ADA improvements as these roadway projects occur. So the, the city administration has made a commitment to the Disability Commission to allocate 5% of the total every year for capital improvements to ADA improvements, and those are accessibility improvements in the roadways, in the buildings, in the parks, and this is one way that we put that into action. So to discuss a little bit about the, the backlog of roadway repairs, this is information provided by the city engineer about what it would cost to catch up on, on the backlog, and if you look at the chart on the screen, the city has of accepted roadways about 234 miles, linear miles, and the estimated cost between the different categories of repair, whether it major rehabilitation, minor rehabilitation, et cetera, would be about $50 million. So that figure is just to scale how much we're doing versus how much is needed, and it is a staggering figure. So park improvements is another area of investment in the capital budget in many places, and this is one opportunity to discuss ARPA. So ARPA has park improvements as an eligible category under addressing the negative economic impact of COVID, and in many ways, in smaller ways, in the capital budget, we're using that to maximize projects that are ongoing, for example, at Clemente Field at Cummins Ellis Park, where there is a proposed funding in the capital budget of $700,000 to further a project that we've talked a lot about with this council and the previous council at, at that park in the acre. As, you know, this allows us the opportunity to discuss an update on ARPA. The city has just recently completed the public input session, so Mr. Flynn, the ARPA Finance Manager, is taking all of that input under advisement, will be preparing reports, we will be talking about that a lot more over the summer, and putting that plan into action and delivering a revised plan back to the Finance Subcommittee from which we recessed several months ago. So some project-specific, projects that are in the capital budget, Inland Street, that is a, a section of the Highlands where we've identified some work that is, that needs to occur, that is, that is an opportunity to also leverage ARPA, because there is water and sewer work that needs to happen, and so we'll, we'll be able to use capital to maximize the ARPA dollars by doing the water and sewer work and using ARPA to finance those components of the project, and then using the city capital that's appropriate, proposed to be appropriated to redo the roadway and the sidewalks and the trees, which have long plagued the neighbors of that section of the Highlands.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, can I just touch on that?
Of course.
Inland Street and Midland Street. I had a motion for one of the streets, I get them confused. We, last year, we did, we paved one of the streets. So is that Midland, and now we're talking about?
Inland Street is the one, I'm fairly, very.
It goes right up to the Washington School?
That's Inland Street.
All right, but didn't we already do that? They paved it last year, we saved the trees.
I believe the city engineer is, is here to speak on the specifics, but there, there was some patchwork, I believe it was not a full, a, a full reconstruction.
Mr. Mayor, what happened over on Inland Street is a gas company did work, and, and they did a overlay, a fast overlay, just to get out of there for repairs. That road was never milled, never any adjustments to structures. They've actually left structures down six inches in people's driveways, so that was a temporary repair, just to get to this point. They didn't, they didn't pave anything, they just basically threw down asphalt and got out of there and made a complete mess, where now the water runs into people's yards because they overlaid over this infrastructure issue, so it is Inland Street that this is talking about.
And we're going to try to save the trees up there, if it's the same street that I'm thinking of, right? It's got big oats and.
That's correct, councillor, and the trees have been part of the issue related to the deterioration of the sidewalks, as well as, I believe, they've been, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but coming into the, the basements of some of the homes, some of the tree roots, but part of the proposal will be working with the neighbors, working on the, the street design, because I believe that there was some discussion previously about transportation engineering of the, of the roadway. Does that answer your question, councillor? Another category is building improvements, and there is a, a proposal in this capital budget for $2.3 million in improvements to the schools. There is a list of projects that were prioritized by the former Commissioner of Public Works. This represents those priority projects. Some are school-specific and have been either advocated for by the principals or the school community. Some touch upon district-wide priorities, such as window replacement and door replacements within the schools, as well as improvements to various mechanical systems or, or building envelopes. And then, moving on, just to talk a little bit about the financing of the capital plan, it's important to, to note that the city is well below our, our borrowing capacity, and what does that mean? So there, under the law, the cities and towns are subject to a debt limit. That debt limit is a set calculation, and the numbers are before you for illustrative purposes, but it's based on a, a percentage of the equalized valuation of cities and towns. The equalized valu, valuation for the city of Lowell is $9.8 billion, 5% of that is $492 million, so the city has $263 million remaining of borrowing capacity, and, but that is not the only factor in the equation of. But that is not the only factor in the equation of affordability. We also have to look at the affordability of the debt service on the operating budget. And that is something that we examine and that we include in the the five-year forecast within the budget. So as it relates to credit rating and reserves, where does that fit in? And how does that relate to why we do a lot of the things we do as it relates to finances? These are two quotes from Standard and Poor's, the the credit rating agency relative to our reserve position and how important that is to to a rating agency like Standard and Poor's, excuse me, Standard and Poor's. And why is that important to us? It's important because in order to maintain strong credit, just like with a home, if you have good credit, you'll get a better interest rate on your mortgage if you were to purchase a home. The higher the interest rate, the more you're going to, well, the more you're going to pay in interest. And what we're seeing now in the market and how we're being advised by our outside financial advisors is that over the, one of the things that's happening in the global economy is that the Federal Reserve, in order to combat inflation, is going to be raising their benchmark rate over the next 18 months in a series of moves. And we're anticipating that, so we will be in the market to finance debt, both for the high school, as well as for ongoing repairs in water and sewer, their Phase 3 of their capital improvement plan, as well as the the general capital improvement plan we're discussing here. And we need to try to get ahead of those rate increases, but keep our credit rating intact so that we can get the best rate and keep the debt service cost down. And that is why the reserve position of the city is is so important. These are just charts that highlight these. There are copies of these in the budget if if members of the public or the council are interested in diving into the detail. So that is a synopsis of the capital plan. It brings us right, right about to the 7 o'clock public hearing hour, but I'm happy to, happy to discuss any, any questions or concerns the council may have as it relates to the capital plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Kishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to CFO Baldwin. You know, as we look at the capital plan, I just think that there are some things that could be better outlined. When you look at like equipment, we could have an equipment list that is projected to be actually purchased with the funding prior to, and we can go out to bid. And the same thing with roads, what roads are being projected, because as we see the cost driving up, we're going to get less done. But one thing that stands out to me, and we've talked about at least for the six months that I've been here, is fire stations. We don't see it anywhere in any of the capital planning and in the repair, and we see that some of the debt services are going to. But we're also seeing the high school come on and other things. So is there a plan in out years to address the fire station issues? And I know there is some funding in the actual budget to do some repairs, but it won't nearly touch even one of them as we saw some of the projected estimated costs come back from the DPW director at the time. So is there an out plan for the fire stations and also some of our other municipal buildings?
Thank you, councillor. That's an excellent question. I think in the capital plan that's proposed, the $12 million loan order for which we just presented, there is money appropriated for a match for a piece of fire apparatus. And this council appropriated a portion of free cash to to buy another piece of apparatus, just not, not long ago. In the last year's capital budget, the 2022 capital plan, there was funding for fire station improvements. And to your point, you know, we received a report from the former DPW Commissioner months ago, within this term, I believe, of a total number for all all firehouses. And that number was somewhere in the magnitude of $9 million. And to address that, you know, we have to take it one bite at a time, so to speak. And so $300,000 was appropriated in the last capital budget. The Fire Department has not quite put all of those projects out to bid yet, so authorizing additional money at this point would be premature.
Do we typically go out to bid for something without having funds in place? Because I've never seen that done before, where you go out to bid for something without the funds in place. And $300,000 won't do much in any of the firehouses. So I think that that is a capital piece, needs to be really looked at stronger, because we have firefighters in firehouses where it's snowing in the building because the windows won't close. So I think that $300,000 today, three years ago, it might have sounded like $300,000, but with the material costs and everything going up, I just, and again, I'm not debating, I'm just asking the question if we could look into addressing more of it in future capital plans.
Okay, Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add another point, that's a very excellent point, councillor. There are other, not to get into the discussion of the budget, but there is a proposal within the 2023 operating budget for pay-as-you-go capital. That is one area where certain, certain capital needs that are not addressed in the in the borrowing plan can be, can be addressed. There are other outstanding appropriations for firehouses that could be matched together. I guess I just wanted to make one point for for the council and for the the viewing audience, that these appropriations do not expire with the fiscal year in the same way that the operating budget does. So once the city council approves a loan order, it is valid until such a time that the monies are fully expended and borrowed by the treasurer, or they're rescinded by the city council. So they don't, they can be added up together or accumulated over time. That's the only point I wanted to make. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor, it's six minutes past seven. I want to get into the public hearing now.
Just do one quick question.
Is it quick?
Follow-up, yeah.
Okay, sure, Councillor Leahy.
Thanks. So just to follow up on the firehouses, that's something that we've been pushing in, like, for example, High Street. You know, it needs to get done. The side door that the people go in is broken. The other doors, I don't know if they can be painted or replaced, but, you know, that's something we, we've all been pushing to get repairs done. So if we can find out what we can do, you know, on a smaller scale to, to improve some of these fire stations on a small scale, but, you know, for example, High Street just really, it needs work, and it should be high on the list, along with the water, hot water tanks, if they're not fully all installed by now. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. It being a few minutes past seven, we'll now start the public hearing, the section 3.1, vote fiscal year 23 appropriation order. This section is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. Hear none. That section is now closed. We're now open to all those that oppose. Open to the public all that oppose. Please state your name, your address, and respectfully, please have five minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Leela Hall. My husband and I, W. Thurman Hall, live at 26 Eppro Strive Lowell. We purchased a home in 1999. We are happy to be homeowners in Lowell. I am also a former City of Lowell employee. I worked at the library next door before moving on to work to the, work for the Middlesex Sheriff's Office in Belenica. My husband and I are both M.A.S.T.A. employees. Both of us were working part-time jobs, but I just recently separated from Lowell Public School, working as a tutor to take care of my sister who's now sick. My husband still works part-time for U.M.A.S. Lowell. I'm here tonight because I oppose raising the real estate taxes. Living on fixed income is frightening with inflation being where it is today. You pay more and you get less. Every time there's a financial shortage, outcome can't be raise real estate taxes. And I say that because I was listening to another city council meeting the night that the budget on the new high school was spoken on. And it was mentioned that night that the real estate taxes would have to be increased to pay that debt. I'm not here to speak about personalities. I welcome the new city manager. I consider him my friend. I'm here to speak about survival, surviving in a time where inflation has already taken your savings or your surplus. I'm talking about managing to live a comfortable lifestyle. Our pensions rarely increase, but everything around us get increased. We have already implemented all the cost-effective changes, plan all your errands, go in the same direction you save on gas, what discounts are available to senior citizens, what they are there available, so on and so forth. I would recommend taking a look at the vacancies in the city first, rather than adding new positions, fill the old ones. Do we really have to spend thousands of dollars to study, a thousand of dollars for a study to find out why employees are leaving? Granted, some people did leave. Why not implement an exit interview process? When you are informed that someone is leaving, retiring, whatever, let someone from Human Resources speak to them and find out why they are leaving. Is there anything we could have done or could do to keep them here? If you're going to raise the real estate taxes of those, those living in Lowell to help pay salaries of those working in Lowell, will the employees working for the city live in the city? Will they be Lowell residents? I want to see changes. I want better services. Improve the services that we're already paying for. Let people earn their pay. If I came into City Hall and got a pleasant response or even a smile, I would be shocked. Race management, I don't even know what to say about them. Put the trash out by 7:00 a.m. on your pickup day, and it might get picked up within a couple of days. My husband and I vote in every election. The last time we went to vote, I was fine. I was permitted to go through. He actually had to show his license in order to vote. Why? I love all the things that I see you doing to improve the quality of life for some people, but what about all people? More people need to benefit from the changes that have been made. Some of the changes that have been spoken of should already be expected. Street lights should always be on. Roads should always be repaired, safe bridges and the likes. I have not gone across the Rourke Bridge since I don't know how long. I'm afraid. I really am, I'm afraid. I love Lowell. I went to the Old Butler School. I graduated from Lowell High. I went to Middlesex Community College, U.M.A.S. Lowell. It's our plan to stay here, if we can afford to stay here. In closing, I oppose increasing the taxes. Thank you.
This section is still open to all that oppose.
Good evening. My name is Yuen Juche. I'm the CEO of Coalition for a Better Acre and also a resident of 527 Potake Boulevard. I'm here as a taxpayer, and I also represent CBA, that is a top 10th taxpaying entity in the City of Lowell, as indicated on page 67. I'm also a finance nerd, who used to be a financial analyst in my former life. So this is something that, that I have a lot of interest in. So first, I would like to acknowledge the city manager, CFO, and his team, who worked hard to put this year's budget together. I understand the budget needs to increase to provide high-quality services that Lowell residents deserve. Today, I ask all of you to consider each line by line on this budget to see where you can find savings and ensure our tax dollars are spent in most efficient way possible. Times are tough for all of us, and to increase taxes by 5.5% without carefully setting the budget puts a lot of burden onto seniors, people on the fixed income, and low to moderate income residents of Lowell. This doesn't just impact property owners, as the increases are sure to be passed on to the tenants. Last two weeks, I studied 786 pages of FY23 budget very carefully, and here are my two cents regarding the budget. First, I would like to have seen FY22 year-end projection spending numbers, along with FY23 budget. It's always good to analyze the spending of year before, before making new budgets. And so, since FY19, City's, City of Lowell's budget went up by 26%, according to page 106. None of our wages has gone up by 26%. That is tremendous increase, and taxpayers just cannot afford to add. Some of the, some of the items that I noticed, parking enterprise fund will see a deficit of almost $3 million this year. Waste water and water enterprise funds will also have combined deficit of $5.5 million. Water and wastewater enterprise funds, five-year forecast shows very large rate increase per year, but it catches up on deficits over five years. Parking enterprise fund, however, shows ending fund balance deficit of almost $12.8 million by FY2028. At the end, whether water and sewer rates are increased or a city subsidizes these funds via real estate taxes, it comes from same part of taxpayers' pocket, as property owners who pay real estate taxes also pay water and sewer bills. However, parking enterprise fund is a different story. Not all property owners utilize paid parking. Therefore, by subsidizing the parking enterprise fund, the taxpayers are subsidizing those who choose to park their cars either in the garages or meter parking. There are many profitable private parking companies. If parking has to be subsidized by $3 million annually, should the city consider getting out of parking business, or at least consider outsourcing to a private company? On page 290 of the budget, there is $3.7 million in city manager's contingency line item. On FY22 budget, this line was $750,000, and there were no city manager contingency funds in FY20 nor FY21. For transparency, I would like to see more details on the use of this line items. I could be wrong on this, but I believe there's an error on page 450 on the gas and motor oil supplies line item. I believe it should be 110,000, not 11,000. Sledge removal costs increased trends almost $1 million annually. FY20's actual spending on sledge removal costs was $2.77 million, and FY23 budget shows $4.7 million. Last year, while running for city council, Dave O'Leary talked about City, City of Lowell building a sledge treatment plan that can turn sledge into a compost. Dave says he was one, one of the crew members who built a sledge plant on Bondi Island and Springfield. When the sledge is processed, the byproduct is a compost, which can be used on parks and lawns, and it can even create some revenue for the city. Since the city has $66 million of unallocated OPERA money, could this be a big-ticket investment that the city makes that has a biggest ROI in the long run? Currently, the City of Lowell processes sewages for Drakeet, Tingsborough, Tewksbury, and Chumpsford. Could these surrounding towns also contribute their OPERA funds to build sledge plant in Lowell? Speaking of OPERA funds, there are two positions on the budget that is related to OPERA funds, one being OPERA Finance Director and other being under DPD, Project Construction Manager position. Is OPERA funding showing up as a source for these departments to offset these two positions? If not, here is $181,000 in savings that can be offset by OPERA. FY23 budget shows 32 additional positions on their payroll from FY22. Combined with these, the existing positions, I counted 133 vacant positions altogether. 133 position salaries adds up to $8.5 million. Since not all of these positions will be filled by July 1st, and some may be vacant all year round, to be conservative, if you discount about 20% of the $8.5 million, you could shave $1.7 million from the budget. I also noticed some discrepancies on salaries that are posted on job listing and budgeted salary. For example, Director of Elections posting salary ranges from $61,000 to $72,500. However, on page 725, it was budgeted for $80,755. Same with cybersecurity specialists, that actually has, even at their upper range, it has over $5,000 in discrepancies, as well as water utility executive director's position, which is posted for $100,000 to $218,000, but budgeted for $125,000. I also noticed city, city managers' salaries listed for $257,000. I know city managers is doing a good job, but have we already given him a increase? but have we already given him an increase? So I'm assuming even the vacant positions got automatic raises and that is where discrepancies are coming from. Therefore, if you took earlier number of $8.5 million and discounted by, say, 3%, it gives me about $250,000 for 133 vacant positions. So vacant discount of 20% with no raise for the vacant positions combined equals to almost $2 million that can be saved from the budget. Furthermore, there will be savings on insurance, pensions, and other benefits for those $2 million, which could be upward of $400,000. So you're welcome, city councilors. I just saved you $2.5 million without cutting any positions and services. So I can go on and on, but I'm sure my allotted time is up. So thank you so much for listening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to speak because this is not really about weighing in on the budget. It's just speaking. These are my comments. The City of Lowell should give its residents, and I am one. I live on 33 Moore Street, Apartment 10 in Lowell. This city should give its residents more input into how resources are allocated across the city. It is not fair that those who will bear the brunt of tax increases like what is being proposed in this budget have not been involved and most items are already locked in. Our city administration should not be afraid of having moments of vulnerability during public participation. Lowell has been a very opaque government. I know. I have lived here for 20 years and it's never felt like my home. It's been opaque to residents of color, language-isolated people, low- and moderate-income residents. Participatory budgeting will strengthen our community and improve this local government. There are many other strategies to lift the bar, if I may borrow the words that were used earlier. Though I'm not a city councillor, I have worked on budgets for years, large budgets. And increasing revenues is not the only way that folks use to make budgets effective. There's also corresponding cost-management strategies. Where are they in this budget? We have not seen any maximization of the value of existing city assets nor, you know, serious leveraging of other sources like free cash sources, state sources, and ARPA funds. Why do we have backlogs of repair or deferred maintenance? These are questions that would be appropriate, relevant, and answered if there was a public budget input process in Lowell. These cities' rents are out of control. Has anyone thought about what the impact of tax increases will be on the rents and the fact that it's the most vulnerable who will be affected? And by the way, most people who live in Lowell, more than 50% are renters. I don't even want to start going through the demographics of poverty in this city. If anyone is concerned that we will spend, you know, the city will spend too much time by engaging the public in our participatory budget input process, don't worry about that. Cambridge and now Boston has been implementing participatory budgets. We live here. This is our city. We want our voices heard and reflected in the budget priorities. Thank you.
Ms. Speaker? Speaker, would you please say your name and address again for the record?
My name is Mary Wamboy, 33 Moore Street, Apartment 10.
Thank you.
01851 is the zip code.
Thank you. This session is still open to all that oppose?
Good evening. My name is John Hamlet. I live at 495 Varnum Avenue. And first of all, congratulations to our new city manager, who I haven't seen since he got his new position. And thank you to this council for this opportunity to speak. I like the idea of a budget that improves services to citizens of Lowell. But I'm far less enthusiastic about paying for those through increased property taxes. Now, originally, I was going to speak tonight on the impact of such a large increase on fixed-income seniors, retirees. That's a club that I recently joined. Now, most of you councillors are still not in that club. You will be someday. You can still expect annual raises and bonuses to help fight inflation and increasing property taxes. But just like 15,000 other seniors in Lowell, a property tax increase may mean doing without something else. At a presentation last night, Chris Hayes, representing NEMCOG, pointed out that 45% of the residents of Lowell are cost-burdened. One half of our residents are spending 30% or more of their income on housing. So now, let's just think through this for a minute. Do you think the landlords are going to absorb the cost of a property tax increase? Not likely. In fact, they'll probably pass the entire expense on to their tenants. They're not going to absorb a loss. So here's the shocker. And I didn't know this and I've been looking at these numbers for 20 years. That's just the tip of the iceberg because 75% of Lowell lives in multi-unit housing. Only 1/4 of us live in single-family homes. That means that the majority of Lowellians, not just seniors, are going to be impacted. I know everybody's taxes are going up, but 50% to 75% of us are going to have to cut back on something else. Now, the budget hasn't been passed yet and I know there's more work to do. On the expense side of the equation, I just heard a great example and also councillor Gitcher has done some interesting audit accounting. And both have found areas that could be challenged without sacrificing the quality of services to citizens. On the other side of the coin, there are new sources of income that could be used to offset the huge increase. I know several of you are discussing the tax on marijuana dispensaries and even adding more. I support tax alternatives that are paid by those with excess disposable income rather than those who will have to cut back on a household need. At last night's meeting of Lowell's Housing Choice Coalition, we looked very briefly at new sources of tax revenue and the one that caught my eye was the vacant property tax, a tax on properties that are vacant for six months or more. A vacancy tax incentivizes owners of vacant units to get them on the market, to rent them or to sell them. It adds them to the housing supply and helps stabilize the housing market and it generates tax revenue. If property owners choose to leave units vacant, they pay the tax and that revenue goes to the city. Oakland, California has about 400,000 people. So they're about three and a half times the size of Lowell. And in the first year, they raised $7 million. So if we could raise two, plus the 2.5 that you've already been saved, you're already looking at $4.5 million and we haven't even started talking about councillor Gitcher's savings. I'd also like to see a circuit breaker for our cost-burdened citizens. Property tax relief for income-qualified homeowners and renters. This is available on a limited basis through the Commonwealth, but localities can make their own income limitations. And one last thing. Our city council voted unanimously to hire a new city manager because they believed he was the best person for the job. And I think many of us support that decision. But I'm looking at some of the feedback on social media and some mistakenly believe that challenging items in a budget is equivalent to challenging the competency of a city manager. And nothing could be further from the truth. Getting a close look at a budget, finding areas that could be reduced without sacrificing services or finding new sources of revenue for a city is what we, as citizens who elected you, are asking you to do. So I ask you to continue to find leaks in the budget, look for new sources of income, and look out for your constituents that will have to give up something under the present budget because the City of Lowell won't. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, City Manager Golden, and members of city council. My name is Bobby Tubela, up 33 Middle Street, and I am here today as a taxpayer homeowner and a small-business owner in the city. I firstly want to recognize the efforts of all team members involved in the development of the proposed fiscal year '23 budget. I also want to recognize the time that council members have and will be spending to ensure that this budget will meet and hopefully exceed our collective capacity to move our city and local government forward by making it more accessible, more responsive, more efficient, and more attractive as a place to work, play, live, and of course, invest in. And so, even in challenging times, excuse me, challenging economic times for so many individuals and families across our city and across our Commonwealth, there has to be a discussion around investments. Investment. I'd like to spend some time speaking specifically about the most important investment in our city, our workforce. It has come up often about the need to pay our workforce competitively and equitably. It has also come up often about the need to undergo a wage and class study to assess why employees are leaving our city. As a professional in talent acquisition and human resources, I must impress upon this body that money is not the only reason why employees leave organizations. And thus, money should not be seen as the silver bullet response to issues of recruitment and retention. While it is encouraging to hear of a refocused attempt at ensuring our workforce is professionally developed, I believe it would be fiscally responsible to ensure that the return on these investments yield more trust and accountability over our hiring practices. The latter is still a rampant issue of concern in the community till this day. However, we should all be concerned about growing our workforce and salaries without also addressing systemic roadblocks overwhelmingly highlighted in the Clifton Larson Human Resources Audit. I believe the more time that is spent uncovering these roadblocks and addressing them will create a more welcoming, safe, and attractive place for our workforce to thrive in. And so, in order to maximize on these important investments, we must ensure that the results of the audit guide our strategic recruitment, retention, and professional development goals. Finally, with respect to investments, we must talk about the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. In order to have this conversation, it's important to start at the beginning. On June 5, 2020, as part of its weekly coronavirus data report, the city revealed that collectively African-American, Hispanic, and Asian members of this community were disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. Collectively, they represented 55% of COVID-19 cases. The release of this data was fervently supported by then-city councillor, now Mayor Chow. Unfortunately, the data presented also followed national trends of disparities in cases as well as deaths. As stated in the proposed budget, ARPA can indeed help us build back better. And thus, the resiliency that is the definitive story of many Lowellians throughout this city's history must be intently considered for the communities most impacted by the pandemic. The investments to these communities, in my belief, cannot be a rising tide lifts all boats mentality. These investments must be intentional and informed by the work from our local public health experts. I would be remiss if I did not mention the current academic crisis we are now experiencing with many of our Hispanic students in our public schools across a myriad of factors. While the pandemic did not cause these outcomes, it absolutely exacerbated it. And if we are going to build back better, let's ensure that our budget is thinking about these communities in the short term and the long term. I want to thank each and every one of you for listening. Have a good night.
I know more people in the room want to speak, but we have one person on Zoom that's been in queue. The person in queue can go first and then...
Mr. Mayor, that person is... I assume that they're not on the Zoom in a while. I'll let you know if they come back in.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Hello, city mayor, city manager, city councillors. I have one question to you. Do we want to keep our residents? That's the question. I oppose raising the tax because I believe we will lose residents through that. As we saw last year, the issue with the housing market, raising rent, raising mortgages, people losing their homes, homelessness increasing, that's what's going to happen if we raise this budget, I believe. More homelessness in the city, more people losing their homes. I think about my grandparents who are on a fixed income, who are retired. What's going to happen to them when they have to worry about paying their bills when these prices rise? We have to think about the people in the city and the amount of struggle and the amount of hurt that this is going to cause by raising this. I know it's not an easy thing to do to go through the budget and go line by line and figure out the problems, but we elected you guys to do that and we need you to do that because that will make a huge impact on our lives for you guys to be able to look at that budget and be able to make those cuts and make a change for our city. So that is why I oppose it. And I hope you all hear me today on this. We do not want to lose our residents. That is the biggest thing. We will lose our residents. So thank you very much.
Hello. Hi, city mayor and ARPA team and city councillors. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Maddie Lee and I'm here on behalf of the recovery community in Lowell to advocate for funding for addiction recovery support through the available ARPA funds. I work for The Phoenix, which is a nonprofit organization that facilitates a sober, active community through free fitness and social activities like CrossFit, yoga, meditation, and social nights. All of our programming is free, and the only requirement to participate is 48 hours of sobriety. We are a community of peers and rely on volunteers to help us reach more people in need of healing. All of our volunteers are either in recovery themselves or have a close connection to our mission. By training volunteers to lead programs, we're empowering the community to heal together. The Phoenix launched programming in Lowell in 2018 in partnership with the Middlesex Sheriff's Office. We have a gym inside the MSO's Counseling Center at 291 Summer Street, which is a hub for services and allows us to support people leaving incarceration at critical points in their recovery journey. Several staff from the MSO are volunteers themselves, and it's been a great partnership over the years. To give you an example of the power of The Phoenix, I wanted to share a story of one of our volunteers, Melissa, whose name I've changed for confidentiality. Melissa came to The Phoenix in a wheelchair following a car accident caused by her substance use. At first, she just got to know the community and build friendships with peers who were living a sober life. As she healed physically, she participated in Phoenix classes and eventually became a volunteer. The Phoenix supported Melissa in getting her CrossFit Level 1 certificate, so she is now a certified coach. She's now working full-time at one of our partner agencies in the recovery field, is a proud mother to a baby boy, and still regularly works out with the Phoenix family to support her sobriety. This is one of several stories I could highlight for you tonight, and with your support, we can reach hundreds more people in need. The need for recovery support has only increased throughout the pandemic as substance use and overdoses have skyrocketed. We urge you to invest in the community's resilience and healing by funding Phoenix's sober, active community. The city of Lowell has $6.23 million through ARPA funds to fund behavioral healthcare services, including mental health or substance misuse treatment by 2026. We urge you to support The Phoenix and respectfully request a commitment of $374,000 over three years to fund a staff member who can support a strong foundation of Phoenix programs and train volunteers who will have an exponential impact for the recovery community in Lowell. I've submitted a proposal to the ARPA city manager and his team and have copies tonight if it's appropriate to share with the council. Thank you.
The session is still open to all who oppose. And I still see a lot of members in the audience here. I just want to remind you that this is the time to speak. Once we close the public hearing, we will not be returning to have open speakers. Still open to all who oppose. Still open to all who oppose. Seeing none, we now close the session of all those opposed. We now go to the council body. And as suggested earlier, we're going to take the items by department. I briefly scanned the different departments. I'm going to call the department by each...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know there are several of us who have conflicts in the budget, and I was wondering if we could do those departments first, just to get them out of the way. I'd like to make a motion that we handle the clerks' budget first.
Okay. What other departments do you want to take out of order? The clerks' department, what else?
Clerk, DPW, and... Yeah, I don't want to make a motion about law, but...
Second that.
Second that, because second by Counselor Musia on the face of the opposed. You know, I have it. Counselor Getchea.
I want to register as abstaining from the clerks' portion of the budget.
Thank you. Any other departments that any of the council member would like to take out of order? Counselor Musia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the DPW has a lot of different items, departments within the DPW. I would have to recuse myself for the DPW administration. I have a relative that works there, and if we discuss salary, I'd have to leave the room.
Mr. Mayor, I will be abstaining from the law department discussion for the same reason. Thank you.
Law, DPW, clerk. Counselor Yam.
I also would like to choose myself from the finance, the treasurer's office, because...
I think at this rate, I wonder how many councillors are left to discuss the budget? All right, well, we'll go to the clerks' department. Give me a second. No more councillor recusing himself, right, Counselor Musia?
From what I'm understanding, if it was one or two people on the council, then we would leave the room. But if it's more than a certain number, then it's the rule of necessity kicks in, and we don't have to leave. So through you to the solicitor, do you understand where I'm going with this? What would you suggest?
Madam Solicitor.
Thank you. I do. The... However, individual councillors, their conflict, if you will, is related to particular departments. So if those departments are in fact taken out of order, or if they're even done in their normal course, the councillor could just simply step out on that particular vote, and that would then free them to vote on the other aspects of the budget as well as the bottom line. So again, you can either take those departments out of order or keep it as it is, and then councillors can step...
Well, I would suggest, as my colleague said, to take them out of order as to those that pertain to the council. So we start with the city clerk, maybe.
Mr. Clerk.
And I'd like the body to know as well that I'll be indicating your recuse on those departments in our minutes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Rook.
If I could, before we get into the departments, I know a couple of concerns. Some have already retired and speakers have spoken on the budget. If I could have the CFO speak about different abatements that are available to the different populations within our Lowell residents, please.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councillor, for the question. It's a very important point that you raise and something that is in response to much of the public testimony we received earlier, and that is available statutory exemptions that are available to residents. So there are a number of exemptions that are available for different categories of homeowners. There are statutory exemptions for residents who are elderly, above 70 years old or above 65 years old. These are available based on existing statutes. So those amounts of tax exemptions that are available vary, and I'm not going to go through each one. But just to give an example, there are also a number of abatements, excuse me, exemptions, available for veterans, and that may depend on whether the individual veteran has a Purple Heart, was injured in battle, or is a spouse of a Gold Star family. There are other exemptions available to folks who are legally blind under Section 37A. There are also hardship exemptions, so that's Section 18 of Chapter 59. Those are available based on income. And so generally speaking, for any individual who may experience hardship as it relates to taxes, there are a variety of exemptions available. And I would invite anyone who's interested, who needs some information about those, to contact the city assessor's office. So the staff in the assessing department is well-versed in all of these exemptions. For folks who have those existing, they send out mailings to everyone who's had an exemption in the past to sign them up for the next year. But if it's something that you think you may be eligible, please call 978-674-4200. You can speak to the city assessor. You can speak to any of the staff in the assessor's office. They can examine your individual case, what exemptions may be available to you, and how to go about applying for an exemption. Those are available after the city issues the first tax bill of the year, the first actual bill in January. So anytime between now and the end of the calendar year, I would invite anyone who has any concerns relative to the affordability of their tax bill to contact the city assessor's office.
And Mr. CFO, there's also a volunteer exemption as well.
Thank you, councillor. I forgot about that one. There is an additional exemption available, which we call the volunteer tax work-off. So individuals can sign up. There's a lot of information about this at the senior center. You can volunteer, well, volunteer, there's a tax incentive involved with it. But you get attached to a city department. In prior years, we've used some of these individuals as a greeter in the city hall lobby. Some of the departments have certain clerical duties that they need help with. And so an individual performs a certain amount of work. We track the hours that they put in. And then they are granted an exemption on their real estate tax bill for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Getchea.
Mr. Mayor, through you to Manager Golden. Are the department heads here tonight?
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Yes, they are. They're in the next room, and they'll be coming in as...
Could we have them all in the audience so people can see who the department heads are, and we can all get to know each other so that they're in the audience so that we can see who the employees actually are in the city and who runs what department?
Sure, that's fair enough.
Mr. Mayor, I would imagine when the department is called, that department head is going to come up to the podium. Does that make sense?
Mr. Manager.
The plan was that the department heads are in the next room, only because there's plenty of room over there. We were kind of anticipating there would be more folks here. And then we'd have a couple of folks in the bullpen, I guess, if you would. One person up, a couple in the background. But if they wanted to come up and sit up on the second floor, that would be...
For the sake of time, we're going to have department heads up in the rafters and come on down to speak. I mean, as long as they're all here, and they're all going to go to the podium once the department is called, I'd be comfortable with that.
Counselor Getchea.
Mr. Mayor, the point is, this has been happening for years, okay? I was a part of a senior management team that kept department heads in the back so that people wouldn't ask questions, and that was a fact. And the point is to have them out in the audience so people can understand as a council who the department heads are, because there may not even be questions on their portion, but at least they can get familiar and see a familiar face with who is here and who actually runs departments. So rather than having them sit and see them, they're separated from us as a city council, I would rather invite them out here to be part of the discussion as a budget as a whole.
Mr. Manager, how many department heads are in the other room?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the council is 27.
Twenty. There might not be enough space in here. Does anyone object to have a councillor, a department head in this room? Counselor Musia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand where Counselor Getchea is coming from, but we have them all in the mayor's reception room. There is a TV screen there, and they are watching this whole meeting from there. They know enough that if we call a department, they will come here to the podium. If you want 27 people to come here one at a time, whether we have a problem or a concern or a question, let's say we call the city clerk's office. The person in charge of the clerk's office, which is Michael Gary or whoever it could be, could be here at the podium, and whether we have questions or not, and they will be seen. I don't know what the big deal of this is, really.
Given the different interests, let me just bring it back to Counselor Getchea. Counselor Getchea, I'll give you the floor. Would you still like to have the department heads in this room? If so, we could ask Mr. Manager to please respectfully ask the department heads to come into the chamber.
That's up to the manager. The manager manages. I just think that people need to be familiar with others. We've had people here for many meetings where we put out chairs and everybody fit. But if we want to sit in there, they can sit in there with the food.
Let's kick the public out, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, through you, I'd request that we take a recess, and we'll set up the 20 chairs or so so people can be in the room.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute recess.
Let's kick the public out. Yeah, let's kick the public out.
Oh, my goodness. Well, nice meeting you there, Dallas. Oh, yes. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
The meeting will now resume. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch Al.
Here.
Councilor Drinkwater.
Yeah.
Councilor Getchea.
Here.
Councilor Janess.
Here.
Councilor Leahy.
Here.
Councilor Mercia.
Yeah.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Here.
Councilor Rock.
Here.
Councilor Scott.
Here.
Councilor Yem.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any other general questions before we get into the departments? Here on none, we'll now start with City Clerk. That's the line item 2023-5 and -6. City Clerk, personal services and ordinary expense in an amount of $476,495. Any comments or questions by the members? Any comments?
Those are the combined. Oh, oh, oh.
Are we on the same page?
Yeah.
No comments or questions on City Clerk. We now go to DPW, Departments, which has various categories.
Mr. Mayor, could you just, when we're jumping around page to page, can someone just yell out a page number so we can look to it?
Sure, I think I got the one that I made space for my easier reading styles that might be different than your compact page. Just go back.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Rock?
Can we please have the department heads state their name for the public so they know who they are?
Sure. For the City Clerk, Mr. Michael Gary, do you want to announce that you are here?
I am present, Mr. Mayor. And I think that the next item would be DPW Administration that was taken out of order.
Okay, DPW Administration, do we have the department head here? Welcome, Mr. Byrne.
I'm here, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Byrne.
Thank you. Any comments or question for Mr. Byrne? I'm sorry? Okay.
Page 445.
That's line item -48, 49.
Are we going to go through all of DPW or just the finance piece?
There are different categories. There's administration, there's engineering, land and buildings, electrical, streets, collection and disposal. So we're now with the administration, which is line item 48 and 49. If there are none, we'll go to the next DPW councilor, Getchea.
Under that portion, and I already spoke to CFO on this point, was under the gas and motor oil, I believe there's a typo in there from the 125, and then it says the manager requested it went down to $11,000 on page 450. And I did speak to the CFO, and I'm not sure, it did carry through to the bottom line number. And I know you said that that would be something you would look into. Is that the only page that we're going to look at, that just one, and then we'll come back to DPW?
No, the DPW have different subcategories.
Okay, so we're going to go through all of those?
Yeah, we're going to go through each category under DPW. Do you still have a question on that line item, Councilor Getchea?
I have questions on the park, the cemetery and the recycling, but I can wait.
We'll get there, but for now, through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO, you have a remark to this current two line items? Or is it going to be further down the agenda?
Okay.
We're going to wait, okay. All right, the next two line items, number 15 and 50. Okay. And now we're going to go back to what line item should we take from the beginning?
No, we've got, it's still a little taken out of order, we've got to go to the law.
Okay.
35 and 36.
Line item 35 and 36. Law, any comments or questions, Councilor Getchea?
Through you to the city solicitor. In FY '22, we used $37,760 in outside funding, non-tax levy. Where did this come from?
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor.
I believe that might be listed in the budget as, it's from an outside source, it might very well be the opera funds. If that's how they-
So it came from the opera funds?
Or the cares, I would refer to the CFO.
Also, there are line items in your budget that haven't seen any usage all year. Court judgments, there's $175,000 that was not used. In claims, very little was used, there's $146,471.77 remaining. Is there a reason why those are remaining like that at the end of May into June?
Madam Solicitor?
Sure. So with respect to the court judgments, as well as claims general, first of all, these budgeted amounts have been fairly steady for upwards of a decade, even more. There are some years when they are wiped out and there are other years where there hasn't been a necessity to use them. The, as far as the claims, there are claims that have been settled, there are claims that are continuing to be negotiated and ongoing.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to cut the bottom line of the Law Department budget by $187,500.
Motion by Councilor Getchea to cut the bottom line budget by 187 and 1.
$187,500, I mean, if there's that much remaining, I think that that cut would be okay going forward.
Madam Solicitor?
Thank you. I understand the idea behind it, as well as the importance of really having to save in every single capacity. However, what I would respectfully suggest is that, again, these amounts in the Law Department are very lean to begin with. And again, these amounts that are typically budgeted, these have not seen any real substantive increase in a decade or more. The, by cutting it, it would put us in a position that in a year where there may be judgments, where there may be claims on a case that we want to settle in advance, we'd have the ability to do that, to make those cuts at this particular time as we head into a new fiscal year. It's not something that I would recommend as a cut. In this year, we, as you can see, these are judiciously used. And while we do have an increase, those monies will be, will then be captured. We're not going to, we don't have a habit of trying to blow through money at the end of the year. We take it step by step, and I know that, I'm sure we agree on that kind of an approach. And again, I understand what's being proposed, but I would respectfully recommend against that for the reasons that I stated.
When the question was first asked, you said that this has been the account that has been like this for many years. And currently, to date, as of May 31st, in the court judgment, not 1% of it was used. There's $175,000 left over. I do believe next year that that can be cut by $100,000. And if there's a need afterwards, you can come back and ask for that. And it's the same thing with court judgments. When you look at your court judgments, the same thing, only 26% of it was used out of 92% that should have been used. So when I look at that also, I see $87,500 that can be cut from that line. And when we're looking at tough times, I can't say to somebody, let's keep it in the bank account just in case. So you're just the first, you're just the first of many departments that this is going to be questioned. Because we did receive everybody's MUNIS reports on May 31st, and I thank the auditor for that. Because that actually translates to us as, okay, what was used up till the end of May? So, and you said in your statements that, you know, we just, this has been a placeholder for many years. So right now, I just think that if it's not being used and it's been the same amount for a long time and we haven't gone over it, then I think that that's something that we should seriously look at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have to comment and caution the council at cutting this line. As a practical matter, I believe that court judgments are a separate appropriation line. And what we're, the matter that we're being, that is considering before the council right now is the Law Department's salary and wages or the ordinary expense lines? Because I believe that's where there was a conflict with one of the counselors. The court judgments is a separate appropriation. If that is the line that we're talking about, if you go back a few years prior, in 2019, the actuals were 300, almost $300,000. In 2018, those actuals were $800,000. And I would just exercise caution in cutting this line because when it is needed, it is needed in full. And oftentimes, we need to supplement the line if there is a judgment or if there's an opportunity to settle a matter as the solicitor mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To, through you, to Conner Baldwin, you just mentioned that a court judgment is a separate appropriation. Why is that?
Mr. Baldwin?
Mainly for tracking purposes. So it is an unclassified expense in the way that we categorize health insurance or workers' compensation. They're a cost center for, so that we can track easily costs associated with any judgments paid. So they're not rolled up into the aggregate cost of the Law Department's ordinary expenses.
Would this get there to the court judgment by the vote of the council? Or you just get there from the manager to propose? The money for the court judgment?
I'm not sure.
How did you get there? By the vote of the council, is that correct?
Who authorizes payment?
Who authorized the money to go into that account or to that section of the solicitor office?
The money is recommended by the Law Department. And then, as with all departments, the city manager either approves or makes amendments to the requested amount. And that's what's in the proposal as to why it's a separate appropriation. That is a historical tradition in law. I'm not sure if that was your question, counselor.
If I may, Mr. Mayor? To understand Councilor Noon's question, if there's a judgment or a settlement that needs to be appropriated, that comes to the council for a vote, correct?
No.
Are you done, Councilor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, I still have a few more questions, maybe one more. This question would be to the solicitor. Do you foresee any court judgment in the near future?
Madam Solicitor?
Thank you. The, we certainly have some challenging cases that are ahead of us and some challenging times in the Law Department. And again, while we may have, quote, instances where those funds aren't utilized, that's not at all an indicator of how the next fiscal year is going to be. And that's why I was making that recommendation. I don't believe that we would want to be in a position, because they're not real savings. So in the event that they are needed, then we would be in a position of having to get money to satisfy a judgment.
So if the money is not there, can you come to the managers looking for that contingency fund? You can do that, right?
You can do that. However, you know, keep in mind that in the event that there is a judgment issues, when that happens, there is a finite period of time in which to satisfy that judgment. Or you then start incurring interest. And while that's the case for judgments, claims is a different, is of a different nature. And for claims, you do want to be in a position where you can begin to resolve issues because you are properly budgeted.
Thank you.
Councilor Noon, you done? Your side, okay. Councilor Yem?
If I understand Councilor Noon's question correctly regarding the judgment is a separate line item, as Mr. CFO mentioned, a case in point that we had a, we just voted on the last time, a loan order for the grand manner. So in a situation like that, the manager will propose the loan order and then the council vote. We voted on it the last time. And it's on the, on the, the minutes is 3.4, a loan order, grand manner judgment. So the council vote to appropriate that in the event that we need it. So to answer the Councilor Noon question, where the money, the money will become proposed in a loan order and then we all, there's a councilor will vote on that. So I hope that's answered Councilor Noon's question.
Your side, Councilor Yem? Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And what I'm hearing through this discussion is that in some years, that this particular line may not be completely spent down and in other years, based on the settlements and judgments, it may be exceeded and need supplemental appropriation. I think that the amount that's appropriated in this budget is fair and prudent. I would recommend sticking with that. I did want to speak to the fact, and because I believe this will not be the only time this comes up tonight, where you can look at the sample size of maybe the last fiscal year or the last couple of fiscal years, and you can see that there may be money left over in a specific account. And it looks like an opportunity that's ripe to say, well, you know, why don't we cut that amount from that line item, commensurate with, you know, what's been spent in the previous year? That may prove to be wise or it may prove to be unwise, you know, if there's a need for more money in this particular fiscal year. What I do want to mention is that, and maybe this would be a spot to ask for some explanation from the CFO, is that, and I think it's beneficial for the public to know that when there is money left over in certain accounts at the end of the fiscal year, that becomes certified as free cash available to the city. It's not that the money is lost. It does come off the tax levy at the beginning of the year, and there is a tax impact on residents. But if through savings or through good fortune or whatever it is that there's money left at the end of the year, that does come back to the city and to residents through free cash. And the way that this budget is built and has been built for many years is that there is the use of reserves to lessen the tax burden on residents. Not all of the money in this budget comes directly from the tax levy. There are obviously other sources of funding, state, federal, what have you, but there's also some use of reserves to limit the overall tax burden on residents. We need this, through this budget, to be able to generate free cash, to replenish those reserves, as has been done for the past several fiscal years. So there is a need to make sure that not every line item is spent to the penny in this fiscal year because, once again, I believe the number is about $3.1 million in reserves that are used in this budget to lessen the tax burden. And it is the prerogative, I believe it should be of this council, to make sure that that money from reserves is replenished. So if we're looking at line items and suggesting that there may be money left over, I would say that that is a necessary thing in many cases. And I think we need to be careful about cutting these line items in areas where, you know, we, you know, may be looking for supplemental appropriations later in the year while we're simultaneously needing to pay back the reserve account. So just wanted to weigh in, it relates to more than just this one line item, but- I think it is something that'll, that'll come up again throughout the evening. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor by Counselor Gitchia. Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Counselor Chow?
No.
Counselor Drinkwater?
No.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
Counselor Janes? Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercia?
No.
Counselor Noon?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Rourke?
No.
Counselor Scott?
No.
Counselor Yum?
No.
One yea. Motion fails.
Mr. Clerk, did we have any other item that, or any departments?
I believe that one more was under suspension.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Robinson?
I have a brief question. Under law, acquisition of property, I see in FY '20 it was 68,225 and then ever since, there's no fee. What exactly is that?
Madam Solicitor? Or Mr. Baldwin, you want to take that question?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, there is a, a classification code in the law department for acquisition of property. And so that account was used several years ago for right-of-way easement acquisitions for a Mastod project. At that time, I want to say it was maybe 2018, 2019, there was a transfer from the contingency into the law department budget. So it was essentially an accounting mechanism to, to house the funds. So that as part of, I don't recall exactly whether it was the Route 38 project or, or 133, 133. So when Mastod does projects, the acquisition of land around it is, is the responsibility of the municipality. And so the transfer was to, to purchase easements of the property owners abutting the project.
Okay, thank you. So that was a hold in place for FY '20 and, and we haven't had projects that have surfaced since, pretty much?
It was sort of like a one-time thing. It is not unlikely that it will, it will likely happen again at some point, but it is not an annual recurrence in the way that we would budget and amount in the law department regularly.
Thank you.
Line item 29, line item 30, treasurer. Any comment or questions?
Just give us a minute to get to the page.
I'm sorry?
Just give us a minute to get to the page.
Line item 29, line item 30?
333, page 333.
Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. City Council, my name is Ted Penichtopolis. I am the treasurer.
Does everybody, does anybody have questions or comments on this section? Okay, everybody's side. Counselor Robinson, are you looking for the page or you, do you have any? Your side? Okay. No questions or comments for the treasurer. Thank you for being here. Well, now return to the regular agenda. We'll start from beginning with line number item dash 01, 02, city council. Any questions or comments? Counselor Gitchia?
I'd like to reduce the bottom line from 280,000 to 265,000.
Is it formal motion, Counselor?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 286,000 to 261,000, reduced by the $25,000 for a committee member.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Gitchia, do you have a second? Second by Counselor Robinson. Any discussion? Counselor Rourke?
So my guess is because Counselor Gitchia doesn't get paid, that's $25,000 down. If the CFO, for some reason, Counselor Gitchia decides not to be a counsel anymore or, you know, just, you know, unforeseen reason, hopefully he's here for the next two decades. But if for some reason, you know, that position is not a counsel, does the money have to go back into the budget afterwards?
Through Mr. Manager, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Counselor. If such an event were to transpire, then we would need to bring a transfer either from contingency or some other financing source if the, the council member were to resign and a new, a new member were to come in.
Thank you.
Any other comments or question? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch, I'm?
No.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia?
Yes.
Counselor Janes?
No.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
No.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yum? No, no. Counselor Yum? We need eight votes, so it's seven, seven votes fails.
Was it processed? Is that something a person was here physically and?
He's on a roll call.
Mr. Clerk, would you please summarize the motion for Counselor Yum?
Motion was made by Counselor Gitchia, second by Counselor Robinson, to reduce the city council budget by 25%, which indicates payment to Counselor Gitchia, who's foregoing that payment. $25,000.
Could you read that again, Mr. Clerk? Sorry.
It was a, was a motion made on the floor by Counselor Gitchia that was second by Counselor Robinson to reduce the amount of that city council budget by $25,000. That $25 indicates the, the salary of Counselor Gitchia who wishes to forego that salary. Currently, there are seven yays in favor of that and three nays. And you are the last vote, so.
I vote no's.
Motion fails. Seven yays.
So Counselor Gitchia, you do a great job. That's why we want you to be compensated.
I don't understand the vote. Last year, we only appropriated nine throughout the full year and we left two vacant that were never even appropriated. So I don't understand.
We now go to my favorite line item, dash 03, 04, the mayor. Any comments or questions or complaints? Please complain. I can't, I can't get anybody to complain about the numbers there. No comments, comment? All right, we'll go to the next line item. City manager, line item seven and line item Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager or the CFO, could you please just describe for everyone the mechanics behind the number that's in the budget for the city manager's salary versus what he's actually being paid? Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is sort of a logistical item where the budget is set to print. Sometime, all of the numbers are baked in, so to speak, in, in April. And this has happened a few times before, but with the change in administration, the number that's programmed in is from the former city manager's salary. Obviously, has, has come up already this evening. The current city manager's salary is at, is at a lower amount than the former city manager. But what is in the budget was set many months ago. We start the budget process in November. In December is when we start. So by the time we get to April, May, we're pretty much ready to go in order to deliver a budget in a timely fashion to the council in accordance with the law. So the number in the budget for the city manager is at a higher amount. However, what will be paid to the individual is the amount set in the contract.
Thank you. And, and what becomes of the excess there?
The excess, as Counselor Drinkwater alluded to earlier, and perhaps this, this bears explanation to some degree, at the end of the year closes to the undesignated fund balance. And that is a procedural matter. So under the general laws, the city operates on a fiscal year of July 1st to June 30th. All unspent balances in departmental appropriations at the end of the, excuse me, at the end of the year, close to what's known as undesignated fund balance. And there's a calculation that's performed by the city auditor with the Department of Revenue. And that is the beginning point, the undesignated fund, fund balance for the general fund for the free cash calculation. So there, it's a little bit more complicated than that. But all departmental appropriations come back to the general fund. And once certain deficits are deducted for any grant deficits or capital project deficits that may exist in any particular year, they're certified as free cash and available for appropriation by the city council. Now, this is something that has happened every year. The council has an, upon recommendation from the city manager, has the ability to appropriate that for any legal purpose.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Any other comments or question? Counselor Gitchia?
Sure. Through you to the CFO. Connor, the budget in the manager's office has a contingency of $3,668,322, which the overall from the approved in FY '22, which was $7,543,956. And this budget is $10,852,301, which is a 30% increase when you're looking at, it's on page 283. When you're looking at, it's a 30% increase. Why do we need that much in contingency when we had $450,000 in FY '22?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll offer a, a technical explanation, but I believe the city manager would like to make some remarks as to the initiatives that will be funded by contingency. So the contingency account, because I think, Counselor, you point out a very important point. If you look at the, the sheet that's in the budget, it looks like there are no actuals spent in prior years. And that's because the contingency functions as a transfer-in, transfer-out account. And those are all transfers that are brought before the city council for approval. So they don't show as actual expenditures because no expenses hit that account. They are transferred and, and this council, in, in the several months that you've been here, has approved some of these transfers from contingency. They are for overages that may come up in a department for various reasons. In the FY 2022 recommend, approved budget, the number was 746,000. What's recommended this year is $3.6 million between two different types of reserves. The council may recall in 20, I think it was 2022, an amount was programmed in the reserve for wages to account for salary and, sal, excuse me, cost of living adjustments for union negotiations. It's the holding account for that, that amount that is transferred into the various departments when those contracts are settled. However, I'll, I'll turn it over to the city manager to discuss this year's balance.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counselor, that is exactly, I was here obviously a little bit too late. And when we made the decision or we were looking to make the decision from this, the tax increase that people are concerned about, we are looking at obviously paying class study. People understand that we are losing some of our farm team and we are looking, and we're losing a lot of institutional knowledge. So we're trying to figure out how to do that. Some of those monies could be transferred in. And by the way, any transfer coming out of this account would be ratified by the council to make sure that this, this is where we wanted to spend this money. But this was in relation to things that I've heard from each council or when we talk about increasing opportunity for advancement, training our managers, you could go on from clean streets, different types of curb appeal, capital investments. And quite frankly, trying to get off, as the CFO had said earlier, pay-as-you-go capital and, and trying to get off of the one-time uses of, of, excuse me, the, the use of the one-time funds. So in this account is going to be something that we hope to use in a whole bunch of different capital investments. And once again, that's something that the council will be deciding. It's not something, I've received actually a couple of phone calls myself from people wondering if it was just something I could go out and spend. And that's not the case at all. It's going to be priority set here by the council.
One, one thing I do want to make very clear is that transfers in and transfers out all show on the munis reports that we asked for in May. So we know what got transferred in and transferred out. So when we talk about any of these accounts that we're talking to cut back, I can see what got transferred in, I can see what got transferred out, and I can also see the percentage used for the year. So it's not like something got transferred in like it does into a regular budget and you can't see the transfer. But when you ask for a munis report, the transfers are before you. So I can see what was transferred in in my munis reports, even though the public can't see that in their budget, what got transferred in and transferred out. And I just want to make that clear because it was just stated, you know, there were transfers. And you can read the transfers inside all of the munis reports that were provided to us from the auditor from May 31st. And I did look at all of them. The contingency account, when we're looking at the five and a half percent increase, I, I think that, you know, last year, even between the two accounts, the contingency and the reserve account, there was $746,000 spent. We got $3.6 million here. I would ask that $1 million of that contingency would be cut and, and I'll make a motion to cut $1 million out of that contingency.
Motion by Counselor Gitchia, do you have a second? Are you seconding?
I second it.
Your second. Any discussion? Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Gitchia. Questions regarding the contingencies accounts. I, I need Connors to tell us as far as FY '20, '21, '22, all those three combined, what are the amount compared to 2000, FY '23, which is 3.668322. Basically, it's $2.7 million if you round it up, $3.7 million. And 2 million of those is for reserve fund. What, what the reserve fund from last year is and what we do with that? The others is $1.6 million for revenue, for reserve for wait. What is it? Is it wait already built into this budget already? And why do we reserve for wait $1.6 million? The other, and maybe Connor can answer that question and then I will have other question to follow.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In FY, just give me one second as I research the, the question, Counselor. In fiscal year 2021, so I'm speaking, there are two accounts here. There's the reserve fund, which is known as the contingency. There's also the reserve for wages, which is a type of contingency. Both of those together in the budget book are referred to as the manager's contingency. In FY 2021, there was a sizable transfer, $347,000 at year end to cover overages in various utility accounts. So that was, it looks like the primary funding budget was in the DPW messenger account, the schools, electricity and gas accounts. So it, it essentially acts as a funding source for overages, whether they're related to utilities or, or other things that come up throughout the year. In the past, there have been certain election or, or legal matters that have needed contingency funding. There were other transfers here and I don't, I don't have all the detail right at my, my fingertips other than the, the aggregate totals, but $95,000 in November of 2020, $60,000 in, in August of 2020. So all, all in all, in FY 2021, there was about $560,000 in contingency needs in that year. And so these are things, these are things that occur regularly. I, I can speak from experience that there is always something that comes up in, in the I can speak from experience that there is always something that comes up in the later parts of the year where the contingency budget is necessary.
You have a second, Counselor Lewin?
Not yet, sir. Thank you. So what are the FY 2021, the contingencies in FY 21?
Counselor, those ones I was just talking about were FY '21. FY '22, the current year, there was a transfer in August
Okay.
of calendar year '21 of $152,000. Another one, a little bit earlier in August, of $85,000. One in the end of September of $65,000. And then one just recently. And these are when these were entered. These were all by vote of the council at the end of, just recently, at the end of May, for $42,600. And the aggregate total there is 344,600, I'm sorry, 344,913 in the contingency within the current fiscal year.
So I might to understand that the contingency account, the manager contingency account is for something of emergency natures, like say boilers go down unexpectedly, and then DPW don't have the money for it, that we use that money from that account to do that? Is that correct?
In the past, Counselor, that has been the use. I believe it is the intention of the city manager to change the use and to use it for certain initiatives which have not been programmed into departmental budgets. So it will be, the funding will be appropriated to the contingency until such a time that that plan is further developed, and then it will be brought forward to the city council for a transfer.
All right. So now, the $1.6 million for reserve for wait, isn't that wait and collective bargain built into the budget already?
The current MOUs with the various collective bargaining units in the city are now appropriated in the departmental budgets for the 2.5%. In the year, two years ago, I believe it was, we were still in negotiations with the unions. And so the reserve fund was where the money was stored, so to speak, until negotiations were completed and the contracts were settled.
So why is the need for $1.6 million for reserve for wait?
Thank you very much, Counselor. That is what we've been talking about with the potential of the paying class study, which councilors have talked about, training managers. This fund is going to give us the opportunity. Now, if I was here three or four months earlier, it's very possible that we could have baked that in to these budgets, to the individual line items. But given the fact that I've been here 40-plus days, listening to what the council wanted with increasing opportunity advancements and whatnot from the workforce and investing in our workforce as well as the capital investments focusing on the quality of life issues, you know, even things such as a marketing plan that we do not have at this time for the city of Lowell. That's where this money is stored right now. If I was here earlier, we could have actually programmed, and I think would be the correct word, into the departments. So what the plan is, if this is accepted, we're going to come back with a plan, and I'll just give a marketing plan as an example. We would come back to the council saying, would you like to spend money on this as we're going forward for the next five years for this plan? That also goes back with the pay-as-you-go on some of the capital pieces. Currently, right now, as I discussed earlier, the 3.5% budget was, we termed it as keep the lights on. The additional 2% is trying to get back into reinvesting in the city. And that's where that money predominantly is. And once again, if we didn't come to an agreement over the next year, that money would rescind back into free cash. But with the discussions I think I've had with the council, just with the paying class study, just with the different opportunities that people want to start getting aggressive on, that's what that money will be used for.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
We'll go to Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Rook, Counselor Scott, and then Counselor Robinson. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it has been said, and I think it bears repeating, that this is likely one of the only items in this budget where the money that's appropriated into it has to come back to the council for appropriation. So we will have the chance to vote up or down any suggestions of funding from this account. So I think that's just important to note. The other thing I wanted to focus on, because this came up earlier in the meeting, is that, you know, we obviously have in front of us tonight a capital budget, which will authorize borrowing to be able to take on a number of different important capital projects. It was mentioned by the manager and CFO that there's a priority of this budget is also pay-as-you-go capital. There are obviously a number of immediate fiscal needs. The borrowing costs have been addressed, and I think if there is the opportunity through this budget to not only make capital investments through bonding and borrowing, but to actually pay with cash from the operating budget, that is sound fiscal policy to save costs on future borrowing. I believe in the context of the budget discussion earlier tonight, fire stations were mentioned. You don't really see a line in the capital budget to specifically address the conditions of fire stations and needed repairs. This pay-as-you-go capital opportunity through this fund would be an opportunity to make more significant investments than the amount of money that, you know, currently exists through previous capital authorizations to repair fire stations. So I think that would be an important investment that could be made through this contingency account. I know the manager will be considering potential proposals to bring to this council. I think that would be a worthy one. As well as, we do have also in front of us $2.3 million in school building improvements. Certainly needed repairs and improvements. You know, we, I believe, will authorize the borrowing to be able to take on those projects within the current fiscal year. However, if there is pay-as-you-go capital available to help fund those projects where we don't have to put out to bond the complete amount for those projects, that's going to save on future borrowing costs. So I can appreciate the fact that this is sort of a novel way of budgeting, I think probably necessitated by the fact that the current city manager, you know, didn't have a long runway to come in and put his imprint on this budget, and I can understand that. But based on the priorities that have been expressed here tonight between the reserve for wages, I'll just note that in the previous discussion of paying class studies, it was noted that we paid for a paying class study but never funded any of the recommendations from it. So I appreciate the fact that there is money being set aside to actually act on the recommendations that, you know, will come from that report. And also, like I said, for me, I think the ability to pay-as-you-go for much-needed capital improvements that are laid out both in this budget and through other priorities of this council is an important one. So, you know, I think I will support this amount in the manager's contingency fund. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Drinkwater said pretty much everything I was going to say as well. You know, since January, this council in particular has asked for much more in spending of $3.6 million, or sidewalk streets, hiring practices, hiring in general. You know, the ability to save money by putting this in the contingency fund, rather than to borrow for the future. I think the last meeting we had, you know, the rate, the example you used was what would cost $10 million now may cost $19 million a year or two from now. So again, this council in particular has asked for a lot of different things. This is a way to help pay for those things, so I'll be supporting the contingency fund. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly appreciate the intent of the motion of the, you know, contingency fund, putting the money into it. I just feel like it's not very clearly defined right now. We're going to the taxpayers. It's one of the toughest times right now for our taxpayers, and we're going without a plan. And for me, it's like, do you ask for the money before the plan, or do you do the plan and then ask for the money? And I just can't get on board with it being so loosely defined. I understand it will come back to the council for a vote, but I just will not be supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. It was mentioned that this money in the past has been used for like collars, contractual raises. Again, this is budgeted currently. Are all groups in the city on the same cycle as far as contracts go right now?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, yes, Counselor. They are.
Okay. And so with this contingency, is this something also, things like communication department, those kind of things can be established from? And would it have to pull from this account? Or could that money be transferred out to create a new department at some point if that's the wish of the council?
Mr. Manager?
Through you to the mate of the council. That is correct, Counselor. This is, once again, I truly believe this is the discussion. This is what has driven people to email all of us and talk to us about the difficulties that have been going on. What, you know, we understand everyone's going through an unprecedented challenge over the past few years, but so has the city. And when I've continued to look at the budget with the assistance and, quite frankly, and unbelievable work by the CFO and all the department heads, we're finding still some structural issues and some structural problems. On top of the things that the council, over the past 40-plus days with me, have talked about what we want to do and what we want to see accomplished. Would it be a communications area? Yes, Counselor, that could be an answer. Could it be the paying class study to talk about why we're losing, you know, some of the councilors have talked about a brain drain? Why is that happening? Why are some of the jobs currently right now, the vacant positions stand at 65? Because that is a flex all the time. It's up and it's down. But we have some positions I would prefer not to call them out, but we can't get any responses for them because we're not exactly paying enough. And these are just in some positions. So there are unbelievable amount of challenges. I am very, very confident in what we're doing in the budgeting. I'm very confident in what this council wants to do for the future. Once again, if I had a longer runway, maybe we would have included this. I understand that this is extremely difficult for everyone to do. But if we're trying to change the way we're doing business here in the city, if we are trying to tackle the $9 million on the fire department, and I want to make no promises, we're not tackling all $9 million. If we wanted to tackle the other $123 million, which I believe was the EMG report, for the infrastructure, the deferred maintenance that we've continued to push off, this is where we're going to try to accomplish that. And why is this important? And many people want to know why we can't do this with ARPA money? Because in some instances, we can, in some instances, we cannot. Brendan has done a fabulous job with listening sessions. He's taken all of your thoughts into it, and we will be moving rapidly on that. I just believe this entire budget, in all three cycles, this budget that is before you, the ARPA piece, as well as the, apologies, the capital piece, this is the plan for us to really start to springboard and start to reinvest in our city. I know this is difficult. I've been in the position you're in. As a homeowner here in the city, I understand that. As someone who has voted the way, or had a vote in the past, I understand this. And to the residents, when I start to talk to them that we are still currently using $3.2, $3.17 million in our savings account to hold our budget together, I believe that the CFO had made reference to this from Standard and Poor's, that's our rating agency. That is not something that they look favorably upon. We are going into definitely uncertain times. There is no question about that. And in this matter, we probably loan, and I always look to the CFO here, a couple of times a year, we're looking to borrow a couple of times a year. The last loan order that we had was 2.1%. This next loan order that we're going to be going for, it could be 4%. It could be 5%, which is potentially doubling. This contingency money would help mitigate that. We can talk about all the stuff we want to do, what we're thinking about doing, and I just believe that the three sections that we have here today are going to set our foundation, and we're going to be jumping in a different direction. And we're going to be moving and doing things that all the councilors here have talked about. Thank you.
I saw the hands of some of the councilors that spoke already. I'm going to respectfully decline.
Mr. Mayor, this is important. This is important. We shouldn't cut it short. And I think if we need to take a vote by the body for people to be able to speak, then we should do that. But this is an important part. This is called the budget. We have plenty of time to speak. It isn't, people speak once. There are interesting things that are brought up from everybody else, and we do have a right to be city councilors and sit here and question things and ask so that we can represent people. And just to cut it short, like we've done plenty of meetings in here, from motions down and cut government work down because we want to rush through something is not the way government functions. And I would implore the rest of the city council to stand up and say, enough is enough. Let's do the work.
With all due respect, I'm not cutting anybody short. With every person that requests to speak, you've been given plenty of time to speak. But everybody, if you're going to keep on continuing to speak, you're going to feed off the next person's.
I would like to make a motion that, I'd like to make a motion that the councilors be able to speak as many times as they want during this budget.
Motion by Counselor Gishir. Do we have a second?
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Lewin? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hesitate, no. Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion is carried. So we now go to Counselor Musia first, since she hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I could say that this is a very difficult vote. To cut a million would be an easy kind of thing to do, but after the explanation and realizing what the intent of it is, I would support keeping it in there. And the reason I say this is because I know that we train people for particular jobs here. And once they get trained, they go to another community and they get a better wage. And we leave that department minus that person. That's not fair to the department. That's not fair to the city. It's not fair to the taxpayer when duties have to get done and they can't because that person that just got fully trained is now working in another community. So if this is going to be something that would go to mitigate that and make it whole again, I would support keeping it in there. Thank you.
We now go to Counselor Gishir, Counselor Scott, and then Counselor Lewin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the CFO. Connor, if this was cut a million dollars, it still leaves 2.6. And have we started a wage study yet for employees?
Mr. Baldwin?
Do we have a company?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been soliciting quotes to do a wage study that, you know, we have to follow public procurement. But the work is underway, so to speak.
Okay. So how long, and I know, because we've done this in other communities that have been there, a wage study isn't simply they just go to other communities and see, they actually talk to employees, see what their job descriptions are, and fill it all in. So it takes a long time, and it could take eight months to a year to do. So pushing these funds off and holding them and saying, okay, we can cut by a million dollars, and holding these funds and wherever, cutting the tax base down, and if we needed an appropriation for a million dollars to fill in the gap, I'm certainly sure we could do this later on. And look, it, there's 82 positions still open. So there's going to be free cash flowing at that point. There'll be monies that weren't appropriate that we'll be able to use during the year that's going to fill too. So I just think that there is monies that will help offset this million dollars from other portions of the budget. And cutting this down right now is a big opportunity for the city to say that. It's not to say, I believe in everything the city manager is saying we need to do. But right now, without the wage study in hand, it takes a long time to get there. There's a lot of moving pieces, and I think that we'll fill in that million dollars in the back end because we've done it over the years.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the CFO, I'm sorry, to the city manager. We were talking about the million dollars and additional ways that money could be made up for. We still have the 2.1 million, correct, that's available for revenue replacement from the ARPA funds? Is that correct? So are there items right now within this budget? I'm seeing meals tax, hotels tax, down building permit receipts, licenses and permits that are down, health department expenses that are receipts, licenses and permits that are down, health department expenses that are up. Are those items that could possibly make up for that? That could, we could use ARPA funds instead of, you know, leaving this money in the contingency?
Mr. Manager?
I'm not so sure we could use the ARPA funds, well, for the replacement, for financial replacement, we can. But if we're doing that, and it's any part of, uh, if any of those monies are in a, if we're going to require to have them next year, that's going to create, once again, a structural deficit, which we're trying to get out of. If that, if that answers your question, counsel, I'm not sure.
Um, not really, just because I would think that these are line items that would hopefully increase back to their pre-pandemic levels, we would hope, correct? I mean-
Right, but we're hoping that, that that would happen.
But we can use the revenue replacement money for these items at this time.
Mr. Baldwin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. While it may be, there may be eligible costs in the budget, uh, that would fit within the framework of the ARPA eligibility. Uh, I think the point that the city manager is making, uh, is that it would, it would create a structure, it would add to a structural deficit in the budget, meaning that if we are to fund a, a pay-in-class study and, uh, and then fund the recommendations and use ARPA, for example, to fund those increases, uh, the next year, we don't have the money to, to pay those, those wages or the increase to wages for employees. Uh, and so in that way, we would have to make that up in taxes then. Unless, for example, there was a drastic increase in, in local aid, which is another important part of our, our revenue, the pie chart that makes up our revenue. Uh, so that, I believe, as I just said, that, that manager is alluding to, we're trying to build in a sustainable revenue source into the budget to fund these things. And that is why it's built into the contingency now. And while it may take time to transpire, we've built it in as a sustainable revenue. And that will be a recurring force, excuse me, a recurring source of revenue year over year. And, and so we won't need to come back and ask for it again, once it's built into the levy. I hope that helps.
Your, so Counsel Scott, Counsel Nuen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Counsel Gishir's that I don't think the cost study, uh, the class study will come in anytime soon. Um, you know, if we need to pay for it down the road, say a year down the road, there's other revenue we can use. Uh, Counsel Scott mentions the two-point-one million dollar revenue replacement. Uh, new growth is also two-plus-something million dollar. And we also have free cash, seventeen-something million dollar. Why don't we use some of those money to, uh, put into those stable account that you're talking about? So that we can, it's less, so that it's less burden on, uh, residents, uh, and especially senior citizens who live on fixed income, giving, you know, we, we know quite well that the inflation is real. It's going up every day and making it very difficult, very difficult for many family to, you know, pay for, to afford grocery, gas. Um, this amount of tax, tax increase, property increase, um, certainly is going to devastate a lot of people. Um, speakers spoke, and, and, and I, I feel them. There's many, many more who, who couldn't come or, or just probably thinks that it's no point to come, um, impacted by this. And so, um, there's a way, I, I understand that there's a way. Uh, we can raise, but, you know, so that we can provide service to, uh, resident, you know, to give school what they needed, to give police and fire what, what they needed. It's already built in the budget already. I looked at it, I looked at this as well, that, that we exceed net school spending every year. Fire department, we put in one-point-six million dollar overtime for the fire department. Police as well. It's a matter of filling those position right now. The budgets, this budget, I believe that three-point-five percent tax increase, property increase, property tax increase, fit in all that. And if we need to use more to do better, we can use all this money. The new revenue, uh, the, the new growth, the free cash, and Counsel Scott mentioned, the revenue replacement, those are some of the way we can do it. And I think by taking this one million, that's, it's from the constituency, constituency account, it now become, uh, uh, you use it as you go. That's not right.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Uh, counsel, that's what we're trying to, when it comes to the free cash, that's a one-time, that's one-time money. We're trying to get away from that. Um, once again, going back to Standard and Poor with their response to how we're, we've been spending money, we're currently right now, if, if we were to deplete every line item or cut every line item at this time, we wouldn't have three-point-two million dollars to put back into our free cash. So, or three-point-one-seven-seven is the actual number. What, what I, what I want to try to do here is to try to set a new standard that we are not using one-time funds for reoccurring costs. And those reoccurring costs, if, you're absolutely correct, we could use the two-point-one, which would be a one-time fund, one-time monies. But when we're looking for that two-point-one in next year's budget, it won't be there. And at that time, we'd have to either cut those things that we just did or increase, um, the revenue. So what I'm trying to accomplish, and, you know, with all of your help here, as well as the CFO, is just simply, this is a painful discussion. This is not an easy discussion. And I know each and every one of you are hearing about it. But this is the, not the issue of one or two years. This has been going on for years where we've had zero or one percent increases. This, um, that does not help the structural issues. We haven't even got into the trash issue, um, that is creating yet another structural problem. The finances on trash and recycling, we're receiving revenue of three-point-three-four million dollars, and there's a deficit on that account of four-point-six-four million dollars. Now, last, but, last, um, last, last, um, council meeting, we had a discussion of looking at fees and, and trying to accomplish that. But if we were to take, uh, trash and put it into an enterprise account, that would increase people's trash right now from a hundred and twenty-five dollars is what we pay today, which I don't believe has been increased, to three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. What we're doing with a lot of this, you know, our, our goal is to reinvest in the city, strengthen our city with our human capital. I think that's our goal. That's what we've been talking about, and trying to get out from this, um, this burden. Over the years, it's impossible when we've done zero, one percent tax increases, and through those years, that just continues to multiply. And that gives us that excess levy capacity, which we currently have here in the city of Lowell, of eighteen billion dollars. You can kind of think of it that over the years, and, and this, that eighteen billion dollars is something that we're, we're somewhat starving the city from. And if you wanted to think like this, and I'm not suggesting anyone should, but you start looking at the nine billion in problems that we have in the fire department. You start looking at the over a hundred and twenty-three million dollars per the E, I'm going to say EKG, I apologize, EMG report. Those are all things that has happened because we haven't taxed appropriately. So I, I, I feel it, counselor. I know, um, I understand where you, where everybody is on this. This is not easy. I'm getting the same phone calls. But if we're truly trying to change how we are budgeting, if we're truly trying to make this discussion about the deficit and just trash, just trash alone is four-point-six-four million dollars. The, the folks who are, um, that, we're paying for that through our real estate, through our real estate bill. We're paying for that, and we're still using three-point-one-seven-seven out of our stabilization account. So this is an opportunity for us. Um, I talked to a gentleman today that sent all of us an email. You probably, you probably got it. And his concern was that by the time the five years was up, and he mentioned me by, by name, that it'd be, you know, he had heard that taxes were going to go up to twenty-five percent, you know, five years, five percent every year. Well, I immediately called him, started to talk about the issue, the deficit that we have, the problems that we have on the structural side, the problems that we have, and I, I hate to keep saying this, but the hundred and twenty-three and the nine million and the pay, pay-as-you-go possibilities. Um, not to even mention, which we haven't talked about, is our normal increases this year with pensions, you know, pensions are up a million six, schools are up over, slightly over five million dollars, health insurance up one-point-five. I know you all have that, but this is an opportunity to change the way we're doing business. That's all it is, and I know it's extremely difficult, and I don't take this lightly. Uh, I, I, I've heard from all of you back and forth about trying to cut, trying to mitigate, and I think that the CFO did a good job, especially for seniors, when we started talking about senior tax exemptions, veterans hardship programs, uh, individuals who are blind, uh, the voluntary tax, um, work program and, and the tax deferral programs. This is a hard, this is, I, I really believe this vote is about this budget. This vote right now is about how we want to proceed in the future. And this is a very difficult vote. But once again, as I've stated in the past, I truly believe the proof is in the pudding. If we have that opportunity to pass this budget to go after our capital piece as well as ARPA, we're going to make this city, um, we're turning, not that we're in a bad shape, but we, we've all talked about from going from this perspective to that perspective, to try to increasing, uh, making it better for people. And this doesn't feel good right now. But when we're talking about increases that inflation is causing here, causing here for the city, you could talk about gas, you could talk about diesel costs. Um, this is, uh, this is a very aggressive stance to try to solve these issues. So I, 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 I respect what you're saying, counsel, very, very much. You and I have talked about this on a number of occasions, as I think I've talked to all of you. I don't sit here and, uh, this is not a lot of joy to do this. This is a very difficult piece. I'm open to questions about where that is. If I had more time, I would have probably programmed this a lot differently. But once again, if this money is not utilized, if it is not utilized, if we cannot come to an agreement on how to utilize this money, then it would go back into free cash. But I really don't think we should make a habit of touching free cash. And it's really because of what is happening. Um, the, the Fed has already signaled that we are going to continue to increase interest rates, and that is going to cost us more money here in the city of Lowell.
Your, so Counsel Nuen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Um, we've talked about this line item in a few different ways. We've talked about it as stuff that you maybe would have programmed differently if you had had more time. We've talked about it giving basically a springboard opportunity to be able to initiate new things that aren't built into this budget right now. We've talked about, um, looking at, you know, wage increases when, when that time comes. Um, so I have two questions for you. One, one question is a simple one of, we decide that after the wage study, John Doe, who works in the Department of Widgets, is short, you know, seventy-five-hundred dollars on his salary, and we really should increase that. Um, I'm just wondering the process. Would it come to us that we would get a sheet that says, John Doe, we're bumping his salary seventy-five-hundred dollars, and we're all going to vote that up or down? And then the other question I have for you is going forward, I don't want to make you start making your FY24 budget now, but how do you see this line in the future? Do you see it at this magnitude, or do you see it being able to shrink back down because you'll have that time to be able to program your budget differently? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counsel, I'm going to start on number two. No, I don't see that happening, um, because I do believe we'll start to program some of this money in. So I wouldn't see that this, um, this particular contingency would be that high. I just, I wouldn't see that. The, the first item, this is going to require if, um, I, I think I know the answer, and I think many people here know the answer. That would require us to get into, um, to have a discussion with the unions, um, about could we possibly change, um, if we were to do X to, I think you said John Smith, I apologize, making widgets. If we were to do an X increase, you know, should we be working Tuesday through Saturday as well? There's got to be some give and take here. This isn't just a giveaway. But I think one of the concerns that we have had, especially, I mean, most of the, the department heads are here, when they put out jobs, people will either utilize it to, um, to get a raise someplace else, or in some instances, um, we don't even have people applying. Uh, there is a piece, and, and that is real. It's sixty-five jobs at this moment in time. Uh, and that's the snapshot that could absolutely change tomorrow, uh, if people were to be hired. We have things out on the street right now, which I know we have, we have some interest in. So to answer that question, how would we do that? That's going to take some work. And I, I look at only some folks that have been involved in collective bargaining to see how that, you know, I, I believe the, um, the folks in those different areas would be more than happy to do it. My understanding is the previous administration, uh, did this with, uh, certain departments. And that's what my, my goal would be, to look at the departments that are the toughest hit. And what I want to see happen in the, in the next couple of years, in the next five years, I want people coming to Lowell, like they do for the police department because of the, we're well-respected, like they try to do in the fire department, like we do in the, um, in the school department. So I want that to happen in the engineer's office. I want people to want to fight to get here, because that's how we're going to get the best of the best. I know by going to different, um, departments right now, the people that are here right now love this city, the people that are working for this city, but I think we need to try to give them a little support.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate that. And as much as I understand, um, the, the pain of all the speakers earlier and what we're looking at for a tax increase, I do see what you're saying. And I do think that this line item is going to be helpful to reach many of the goals of your administration and of this council over the next twelve years. I'm sorry, twelve months. Sorry about that. Um, but that being said, I will support this line item for this year. Um, but I'm going to hold you to that, if not, this line item not being of this magnitude next year.
Counselor, I want to be clear on that.
Thank you very much.
That is not something I'd be looking to do.
Your, so Counsel, Counsel drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, just have a, a question through you, um, to, to either the manager or CFO, whoever would be more appropriate to answer this. So there's been discussion, um, about the, the couple different purposes of this contingency account. Um, one essentially being the manager's contingency, which, which could be used for a number of priorities, and the other being a reserve for, for wages. Um, the way we're, we're looking at it here in the budget book is that the, the amount, the three-point-six-million dollars is essentially going into one, one contingency account. Um, I, I can understand that if we do a wage and classification study and there are recommendations and proposals to, you know, make wage adjustments or, or whatever it might be, those may not happen within the, the fiscal year twenty-three. Um, I just want to clarify with the, the, I think it was one-point-six million that was sort of, the idea was to, um, sort of have that be the amount for the, the wage reserve. If, if within this fiscal year, that, um, one-point-six-million dollars ultimately is not utilized, um, for, for employee wages, can that, can that be used for other priorities that were, that were laid out, such as the pay-as-you-go capital and, and other, um, priorities of the, the contingency account? Or, or would that one-point-six be limited to the wage reserve?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counsel, my intent would be, uh, obviously to listen to the, the council on this. Uh, but whatever we would do, we wouldn't create that reoccurring event. So, um, what we have looked at is in talking in regards to the wage and study, we're looking at breaking the, the city up into smaller sections. What Counsel Gishir had said earlier is very true. It would take a long time. Could we possibly, and this is only a question that we've been asking, we haven't got an answer back yet, can we indeed take little chunks of it to get the information back quicker? Uh, but if we're finding out that that is not true, that we can't spend that money, um, I would once again advise, I would ask, I guess, the council, that if we were going to spend any of this money, it would be on a one-time piece. Therefore, it's already now, let's say, programmed. Uh, it's very difficult not to show your, your hand in a situation like this. Um, I'm sure some of the folks are saying, oh, boy, I can do this. Um, but that's not going to be the case at all. I've been talking to many of the counselors here about this particular piece, and I think we have, uh, some pretty unique ways to try to get folks that want to stay here, that are committed to this. And, and once again, I can't say enough about the, um, the department heads and the men and women that I have met. They are committed to this city, and I, I want to make sure they, they stay here. And, uh, I really stand, stand committed to making, you know, the city of Lowell- committed to making, you know, the City of Lowell the place that everybody wants to go to. The City of Lowell that it's hard to get to because of the way we treat our employees. But to answer your question directly, yes, on a one-time fund, on a one-time fund, if there was money left over, I would do that, because the next cycle, we would have that money again.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And, and I think that, that's a good thing. Because, and I'll try not to repeat too much of what I said in my earlier point about this, but I think the availability of pay-as-you-go capital is extremely important. And if the 1.6 million that has been, say, let's say earmarked for a wage reserve, is ultimately brought back to the Council to take on capital repairs in schools or fire stations, just to use an example of a couple where we know we have needs, you know, we've sat here and we've talked about the deplorable conditions of firehouses and everything else, that is something that I could support. And the reason is, I think ultimately what this comes down to is, what is more prudent? Do we not use that pay-as-you-go cash, take it out of the, the tax levy, and put it on to the capital budget if we think it's needed? That's only creating debt service down the road. And if you look further down in this budget, it's actually on page 661, you can look at the future debt service projections, and, and they get quite large. And this is good debt. I don't mean to say that, you know, this is debt that, in many cases, I've voted on, and I, and I support it. But the fact of the, the matter is, is, you know, you look at it, and the projections are, are going up. So I think we need to strike a balance between addressing a lot of the deferred maintenance and, and projects that we know we need to take on, but we can't just keep adding it on to, to the capital budget, because, you know, as we know, with the interest rates increasing, our, our debt service could eventually reach levels that aren't quite sustainable for the city. So again, I'll try not to repeat myself, but I think this is a good balance between pay-as-you-go, as well as a prudent capital plan as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mysia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whatever happens with this manager's contingency account, I still want to make it clear that I need a balance as to, like, whatever we're transferring or taking out of it, I, I still want a balance of what's left. Okay?
That's absolutely, absolutely, Counselor.
And I know that you don't want to put, if, example, it passes, I know contractual obligations, and you're not allowed to do that. That's fine, but a bottom-line figure to leave me a balance. Thank you.
No other comments. We do have a motion on the floor that was second to lower the City Manager's budget by $1 million. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch out.
No.
Counselor Drinkwater?
No.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
No.
Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercia?
No.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Rourke?
No.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
No.
Motion fails.
We now go to line item 2023-09, City Manager Lowell School System. Any comment or question on this line item? Anyone? Here on on, we go to the next line item, 2023-10, 2023-11, City Manager Marketing Development. Any comments or questions? Here on on, we go to the next one, line item dash 12, City Manager Contingency. Any comment, any more comment, any more question? We'll go to the next one. We'll go to line item 2023-13, City Manager Contingency again. Reserve for Wages. Any other comment, questions on this one? Counselor Getchea?
So the, between these two accounts, there's $700,000. That, that's in addition to the 3.6? Is, is that correct, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the CFO?
No, Counselor, we may have, have covered this item in the, in the discussion we had, but these appropriation order number 2023-11, I'll strike that, 12 and 13, are the items we've been discussing here.
That, that's what I thought, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, I think we already voted on that. Thank you.
Go to next line item, 2023-14 and -15, City Manager Cable Access. Any comments or question? Here on on, we go to line item 2023-16, again, cable access for transfer to schools. Any comment, question? Here on on. We go to 2023-17 and 18, City Manager Case. Any comments or question? Here on on, we go to the next line item, 2023-19 and -20, Finance. Any comment or question? We now go to line item 2023-21, 22, Budget. Any comment or question?
Mr. Mayor, we're going by department, correct?
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry?
By department?
By department.
That what we're doing here?
Yeah, we're going by the vote.
Yeah, we're going by the, by, by the vote.
Okay. Thank you.
We now go to line item 2023-23, 24, Auditing. Any comments or questions? Here on on, we now go to line item 2023-25 and -26, Purchasing. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? Okay. Would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Chief of the City of Lowell.
Thank you. We now go to 2023-27-28, Assessing. Would you please introduce yourself? Counselor Janess?
If it's not too much trouble, could we please utilize the podium so that people at home can see the faces as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Ellen Bredeau. I'm your new chief assessor.
Thank you. Welcome to the chamber. Counselor Scott?
I just have one question, if you don't mind, please. Through you to Mr. Manager. There's a performance metrics that's in the budget for this department, and one of the things they, they talk about is cyclical inspections, building permanent inspections, and their, the target is quite a bit lower than FY '20, and I just thought that they would be increasing the number of inspections now that people are, you know, more acceptable about people entering their home, et cetera. I was just curious about those, those numbers.
Sure. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the Council. Counsel, she's brand-new. And Sula May is still on staff. Just, when I say brand-new, I mean five days, six days.
There's no money attached to it.
Right.
Maybe you could get back to, to me on that.
Sure. We can get your report on that.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to bring this to the attention.
Welcome.
She's brand-new.
Any other comments or question? We covered the threshold already. We now skip to line item 2023-31 and -32, Human Relations. Would the Director please introduce yourself?
Good evening. Mary Calery, HR Director.
Welcome to the chamber again. Any comments or question? Counselor Getchea?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Human Resource Director. Currently, I, I think, I will ask the Manager first, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Manager. Currently, how many open positions do we have?
Mr. Manager?
I thought you said 63.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the Council. It is 65, and that's the most recent count as of today.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Calery. There's 65 openings, and on the city website, there's only 14. I'm sorry, Mr. Manager.
Counselor, I apologize. That's 65 with the new, that's for, for FY '20 '23. So if I'm doing my math correctly, that's 40 opens, that's 40 openings. So that includes the newly proposed positions before the Council this evening? That would be effective for July 1.
Okay, so, Mr. Manager, you've done a lot of work in the last couple of months. If we went from 80, almost 90, down to 40-something, so...
Counselor, I think in some aspects, we were just, you know, it was 82, and, no, we have been filling some things, and it's been actually the department heads that have been doing all the work, so...
I applaud you for that, because I think that, that's where the services, that's where the services meet the ground. It's not in budgets, it's not in expenditures, it's where people are working and doing the work and bringing these things forward. I see on the website, as of today, there were only 14 that were actually advertised. Could you just elaborate so people can understand why and how there's not the, the number of 60, whatever it is, 40?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. I have actually, I believe it's eight, and I'm looking over to the HR Director right now, eight on my desk that we're looking at to see what we're going to do. There are a number of other pieces, one of them, the Homeless Coordinator, which we have a standing meeting on Wednesdays to get that up and running. So there's a number of, a number of one-offs that I am, I had promised and committed to doing a desk audit to find out if we need these positions, and that is what I've been trying to accomplish. The men and women who are the department heads over here aren't, they've been, they've been waiting on me. So that's on me, not on anybody else. But it is trying to, trying to dig deep to make sure that these, that these actual positions are in need. Now, there's all, also, I'm going to say there's approximately 900 employees on the city side. There are, there's particularly a number that will always be in flux of, of members, excuse me, of, of employees that we don't have just because of retirements and things of that nature. So... What a battery. Well, sorry. Once again, I talk too much, I guess. I don't know. Sorry about that. But I, my hope is to have that accomplished within the next six weeks. But we are, we are trending downward.
So we, we talked earlier, and in this hiring, I'm looking at this budget, and I'm seeing in pre-employment physicals, almost, it's just basically level-funded across, and we hired all these jobs. So I'm just wondering if that's going to cover. But also, we got the drug testing piece that I wonder if we cover between our CDLs. But in addition to that, we just went through a few years back, the CLA report, and you spoke to it. In this budget, we only see one addition for the HR Generalist Recruiter, and I didn't really see that anywhere in the CLA report. So, and I don't know how we came up with the amounts or anything like that. But when I'm looking at that, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Calery, do you think that this budget as proposed is going to make you successful in all the areas, or a majority of the areas? And if not, why haven't we addressed those within this budget for that CLA report, which is a Clifton-Lassen for anybody watching? We had a report put together, and it came out with all these deficiencies and numbers that needed to be done. And I'm just wondering why that wasn't put forth to this council as we've been addressing for the last, at least, six months that I've been here. We've been looking, and, Mr. Manager, I, I understand that, you know, you're fresh to this piece, and there's a lot of moving pieces that went on in this budget, but that was in extreme importance of the council, and we spent many a days here. And now, I guess, I'm wondering, was that just a fluff report, and we just needed one position to make us successful? Or is it, you know, a work in progress? I'm just wondering, because that's all I see in here.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to, to the Council. With the Personnel Subcommittee, we are in the process of implementing some of that CLA. And once again, Counsel, I have to take responsibility for that, for those pieces. We are in that, the RFP for the DEI officer is not out yet, but it will, excuse me, the RFP for the diversity training is not out yet, as well as the officer. And that is something that we'll be working on. I think that's what you're talking about, Clifton-Lassen report. But what we are finding out, we have changed, the, the order has changed, and I'm going to leave this up to the HR Director, to the implementation of online, the applicant, the applicant process, which has all, all been happening. The, the amount of paperwork down there is, it's not changing, it's changing. But I'm going to leave that to the HR Director to discuss.
Yeah, so the applicant tracking is underway. Excuse me. And it's really taken a lot off the staff in the HR office. Took us a while. We still have a few bumps we're running into, but it's been great progress with the applicant tracking.
I think this budget as proposed has major problems through the next fiscal year, because we're not really addressing as much as what that Clifton-Lassen report put out. So if we're going to change some of the environment within the city workforce, and I don't mean that as a negative to the department heads who are sitting here, but I think there's a lot of training that needed to go on that we talked about, we discussed, and maybe that's part of this, you know, magical contingency fund that's there, and it's all built in there. I don't know, but I would have liked to have seen it in here as a line item, as training, and pushed it so that we had middle management training. And you, Mr. Manager, and I have discussed this over and over again. You know, just from budgeting pieces for middle management, to the way they treat their employees, to the way we do the hiring process, all the way down. And when, when I look at this part of the budget, it's an extremely important piece to me of the budget, because that's what sets the tone for all employees throughout the city, and how we treat others, and we make it work. So I just think that only one position in here for $56,000 didn't really address anything on, on my end, as I read this. I don't know what you're doing in the background. I'm just looking at a budget and saying, okay, I have this report here who says there's huge liabilities going on in our hiring process. There's huge liabilities, that's why we have a DEI officer position, and it doesn't look like much was addressed. And you're probably doing it from the background, and, and it's not. But I do think, in the budgeting end, it doesn't reflect the work that's being done.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. You're, Counselor, you're absolutely right. That is something that is happening in my office right now, and I think that really leads us, because of that ramp-up time that we were discussing. When the Subcommittee was asking for a roadmap and trying to get this accomplished, that is happening. That is happening out of my office, not necessarily out of the HR office. The training of the managers, as a matter of fact, we had a leadership meeting just this morning. That's right, we've been together for quite some time today. But we had a leadership meeting this morning talking about training for manage, for middle managers and, and folks of the like. So that is something that the HR Director does know about, but only knows about it, actually, probably from today's, today's meeting. So those things are happening, and unfortunately, the folks that we did meet with, they did send back a, they sent back a dollar figure that we're going to, we're going to need to go to an RFP on this. So that is, that is happening, and it is not reflected in this budget, but it's going to come out of the City Manager's office.
Your answer, Counselor? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, through HR Director. Just for my own education, what is a HR journalist? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through Mr. Manager to HR Director.
What is the position?
Yes, what does he or she do?
So they're going to do a little bit of everything. My office, we're all trained in different sections of the HR, so they handle benefits, they're going to be handling hiring, they're going to be handling some of the budgets. I was trying to think of everything we do down here. It's going to be a combination of everything.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, previously, Counselor Getchea was talking about the new WH, W9 at the, at the hiring process, and then, and then also the new hiring will have to have someone explain, because if I'm a new hire, I do not understand the benefit, the package. So maybe is it what the journalist will help do, explaining what the package, what the benefits, you know, claim one or claim zero, depending on your family status, right?
Right. Yes, so...
Thank you.
That will be the part of the hiring process, that we, we sit with them now, and we've given them out instructions on how to fill out, I believe you're talking about the tax forms.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Noren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the directors of HR, Mary Calery. So you just explained to Counselor Jem that the dispositions, that is, to help with the tax form, is that the only plans you have in mind? Or what's some of the other plans you have in mind for these HR journalists?
No, that's not, that's just part of the hiring process. So they'll be helping with the hiring process. We do the benefits for the city side and the school side, they're going to be helping with that. They're going to be helping with the applicant tracking. We handle all the seasonal and summer kids, they'll be helping with that also.
Who done those job before this position is opening now?
The four of us.
Will this help to address some of the concerns that the Cliff and Law, Cliff and Larson's report asking for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I think we all need to take a look at this Clifton Larson. One of the things that they recommend, first of all, is given the very lean staffing of the HR department in need for more HR expertise, more HR expertise within the HR team, especially when the HR director decides to retire. CLA would also recommend that the city budget for the addition of an HR generalist. Now, their definition or recommendation is a trained HR professional, not an administrator, to the HR team. And it says, even with the addition of the ratio of HR support to total employees would still fall below the benchmark. Because they recommend, I believe it's a one to a hundred is the ratio Clifton Larson came in at. So if a HR generalist, which sounds like we're going to be using them to do administrative work, which they clearly recommend not to, in addition to that, we're still way below what they're saying for staffing levels in that area. So, I mean, if, if we're looking at a five-hundred-and-two-million-dollar budget here, I think we need to plan accordingly as far as staffing in that field. Because with, we just hired, what, thirty positions in the past forty days? And so, I mean, with increases in other areas, and we're looking to recruit and bring good employees to the city, there's no way five employees can keep up with the needs and demands of our employees, of our public, of the application process, even with technology. And, and I really think we can't just be doing things without knowing what we're doing and spending money. It's clear, HR generalists should be a trained HR professional and not an administrator. So, I mean, another thing that stands out to me in this budget is FY 2020, it says, average applicants per job posting, ten-point-seven-four. FY 2021, average applicants per job posting, ten-point-eight-six. Forecast FY 2022, average applicants per job posting, twenty-two. Target FY 2023, twenty-five. If we're getting applicants for these positions, I mean, it, something's not adding up to me. And, and I think if we're going to look at spending money on, on classification study, which I definitely think is desperately needed, but I think we need to narrow it down. If we're getting from twenty-twenty-eleven applicants average to twenty-twenty-two forecasted for twenty-two applicants per average, I mean, I know there's key positions. We, we might not get applicants for the professional titles, and we need to probably look at increasing salaries in the office in that area. But, I mean, I'd like to see more data. It, it doesn't seem to me, according to what I'm seeing in this budget, that we're not getting applicants.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counselor, some of the, some of the applications I'm getting just in my office alone, they're coming from all over the country to take, you know, I'll give an example, an admin position. And I'm not so sure why that's happening. I don't know if it's spam, I don't know what's happening with it, to be quite honest with you. And some of the work that the HR department has been doing, I'm wondering if this could be a little skewed, is because we also take the, the lifeguards, the park instructors and all that. So I don't know if that's actually skewing the number a little bit higher. But we currently have a couple of pieces, a couple of jobs out there that we don't have anybody. And for the most part, you're correct in the sense that it's, say, somebody with a, that requires a license or something. The people just aren't applying. So maybe to the HR director, maybe that's something we could, I guess we can tease that out because I do believe it's probably park instructors, lifeguards that, that push that number up all the time. Because I can show you on Munis, apparently I'm the, the only manager to use Munis in some of these aspects. I'll hit it just to see, because the, the, the people that are really doing the work are behind you, they have zero, just nobody's applying for the position. And it's just, it's confusing to me, so.
And can I ask, what does that HR generalist, what did we, we put that out, what's the pay for that position?
It's around, it's around fifty-three.
So here we are looking to attract qualified candidates, and we're, we're offering fifty-three thousand dollars for a trained HR professional position?
Through Mr. Manager, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may add, Counselor, I think Ms. Calery's being a little modest here. There are trained professionals in HR. I think the assistant HR director, obviously Ms. Calery, whom you all know. But the assistant HR director is that trained professional that you're talking about. The problem is, she's burdened with administrative duties. And so what we're trying to accomplish here by proposing this ordinance position to be created by the council that was recommended in the Clifton Larson audit, is to, to take some of those administrative duties so that we can proceed with some of these new initiatives, to use Munis for applicant tracking, to help with, you know, all of the other administrative functions that HR performs, benefits for the city and for the schools. The HR department administers all of the health insurance benefits for the school employees. But to free up the time for the leadership, two of the, the four folks in HR, to focus on some of that professional training and to use their skills and their licensure to, to good use.
Thank you for that. But again, if we're following a recommendation from a study that we paid for, or was paid for, and they specifically state that HR generalist shouldn't be doing administrative work, but more professional work, why wouldn't we look to create an additional position at that time? Or, or something to help with this administrative factor? Because again, we're still below the minimum required staffing levels by far in that office. And, and, I mean, if we're defining, if we're looking for someone to do administrative work to alleviate that kind of jobs from the existing employees, why are we following this recommendation? Because that recommendation is not saying to use that position in, in that capacity.
Mr. Manager? Mr. Baldwin?
That's an excellent point, and I don't disagree with any of your, your comments. I think we're trying to be careful financially and to build up rather than to add a full, to add a number of new staff to HR, or to add a position where, to be perfectly honest, I don't know that we could attract someone with that kind of licensure for fifty-four thousand dollars. So we're trying to be prudent and trying to take that into consideration with all the financial needs of the city and build up to that place that Clifton Larson says we need to go.
Thank you. And, and with the vacancies, again, this isn't an increase we're talking. These positions are funded without any additional increase, the vacant positions. If we still have forty vacant positions, isn't it reallocating resources that we've already agreed to? Without any addition, it's these positions that have been vacant. Wouldn't it be just a matter of, okay, we're going to, instead of filling three positions that sat empty in a different department for some time, we're going to look to fill two positions in HR because of this recommendation? And this is the money that it's going to cost us? As opposed to saying, we're going to fill all our vacancies just because, and then try to fill whatever recommendations are coming in?
Mr. Baldwin?
You've posed a very interesting question. It's a difficult, those positions in departments that are vacant are not, some have been vacant for some time. The council and everyone needs to remember that during COVID, we had a hiring freeze in place. And that, we are still dealing with the repercussions of that, and that was in place for, for a reason. It was for, many of the, the members of this council were not here at the time, but there was a very distinct and real possibility that we were going to have to lay people off. At the beginning of COVID, we were unsure what was going to happen to, to revenues for the city. And, but not for the federal relief through the CARES Act and through ARPA. It did seem imminent that we were going to have to make cuts. And so I'm recounting history here, but we had a freeze in for a, a long period of time. And now we're trying to build back from that freeze. And it's not quite as simple as not filling positions and transferring money from those departments into the HR department or to other departments. There are restrictions on transfers under the law. As well as those positions are a core function of, of the city. It's just that we're unable to fill, we're unable to find people either who are qualified or who are willing to work and take the positions. And, and not every position is the same, so I shouldn't paint with a broad brush, brush, rather. But those are some of the reasons why we have this number of positions open. And I hope that addresses your, your question in some part. But it is a very difficult moving target when positions become open within all of the departments. That is something we were constantly battling.
Thank you. And I mean, the, the point behind all this is just, I think when we're looking at a budget of this magnitude, a price tag that comes along with it, then to sit back and see, we're not even meeting some of the things that we've been discussing and shooting to meet. So I, I just, I don't see how this makes sense.
Your other side, Counselor? Any other comments or questions on human relations? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Just to clarify one thing, when we were talking earlier about that contingency fund and that money, this is something where if we are proceeding a little bit slowly, this is something that we can adjust this department with down the road, maybe, right? When we look at staffing issues and department issues. So it's, I mean, we are proceeding cautiously, but we are moving forward.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. That'd be correct. If we're looking, once again, if, if we had a, if I had a longer runway, we could have probably implemented. I apologize, Counselor Robinson, I was talking to the CFO, I was trying to figure out where we were going. But if we needed to increase another four or five people, or six people, whatever the case may be, I'm quite confident that every person behind you would appreciate that too, but I'm sure Mary would. But yes, to answer that question, that could happen, yes.
Thank you.
No other comments on human relations? Thank you, Ms. Calery. We now go to line item twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-three and dash thirty-four, management information systems. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Midan Fernandez, the city's chief information officer and MIS.
Counselor Gitchia?
Seems like it always starts here. So through you to Midan, how much, how many, how much in money was, was spent on equipment out of either Opera, CARES, or, or any of that in the last two years down there? For computers, and what line item did that come out of?
So the, the opportunity that was provided for CARES funding, for example, I, I don't know the exact number. And the number was split across a variety of, of departments. So for example, emergency management deputy director was responsible for a significant amount of equipment there. On the city side, we did purchase a bunch of equipment early on, including laptops, including servers to provide remote services as everything shifted and we had to accommodate working from home and the transition for everyone to just suddenly up, move elsewhere and continue the business of government from home. In terms of the amount of money that was spent, I don't know the exact numbers.
Okay, so during the last few years, we've made a solid investment into the MIS system with new computers and all these upgrades. When I look at your account, I'm looking at repair and maintenance of equipment. You spent year-to-date, actuals were sixty-thousand-two-hundred in the last couple of years. And it got allocated at sixty-thousand-one-twenty-five. My recommendation would be to reduce this line item, which would reduce the bottom line by at least that thirty thousand. But I also have questions about two new, there's three new positions in there. Cyber security specialist, the senior application specialist, and the application specialist. And that totaled two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. When I look at this, I, I can see the need for the cyber security specialist. But at this time, when we're starting to look at other areas, I, I just can't wrap my head around more people down there. And, and I just think that the senior application specialist of eighty-five thousand should be recommended to be removed in the application specialist, and neither one of them are filled. So I, I think the bottom line for this department cut, reduction, I shouldn't say cut because it sounds so bad, one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-zero-seventeen is what I would propose as a motion to reduce that bottom line by.
Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Scott.
May I respond to that, Counselor? I don't know if you're looking for information on.
Absolutely.
Yes.
If I may, sir. In, in terms of those two positions, the senior application specialist and the other application specialist, the, the additional application specialist is a position that is actually not on the tax levy. It's something that we're looking to have funded through the schools. That is something that is specifically intended to provide the Munis technology support and services that we currently use here in the city and leverage those same services on the school side so that they can utilize the same services that we've been trying to move forward with. That includes everything from the applicant tracking, the Munis recruiting that has been discussed significantly, as well as other things that touch on the auditing offices and payroll, and trying to get the same services leveraged over on the school side, which we are unable to do with the existing resources that we have. So we've reached out to schools to have them fund a position specifically targeted to support their services in line with what we're doing on the city side. So it's, it's kind of a neutral, or a net neutral funding from a, from a cost perspective where it's being funded through schools. The senior application specialist is designed to specifically focus on projects. As you've heard, there are many things that we're trying to do with technology to support all the departments, whether it is, again, the Munis recruiting, or whether it's changes and upgrades to the utility billing system. As you may recall, Counselor, we had looked at moving to, from utility billing classic to utility billing CIS, something that we did complete, and we are in the process of rolling out additional services for that. Whether it's projects to support human relations for all of the employees through employee self-services, which when you look at the employment opportunities online, you're also looking at the employee self-services component, which allows all the employees to leverage tools, to go online, access information, and interact with their information in the system, hoping to reduce some of the calls they have to make to auditing and reduce some of the calls they have to make to, to human relations. There's a variety of other tools, and I don't mean to bore you on them. But the senior application specialist is intended to be able to provide focus on those areas and support the other application specialists that we have in-house, sir.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Baldwin. How many positions does the school department fund in MIS directly? And is this one of them?
Mr. Baldwin?
This would be the first. And if, you know, if they were not to agree to fund, or if the position were to be reduced, it, it wouldn't reduce the tax levy because it would be funded by, by the school department.
Couldn't we transfer that, those funds over to the already one that's there, that's the application specialist? We already have one budgeted, so why wouldn't those funds be used towards that person? If they're only funding one position and you have two for the same exact title, why couldn't one be funded by the schools? Do you see that?
Mr. Baldwin?
I believe it's their prerogative to choose which position they fund if the funding is under the jurisdiction of the school committee.
Well, we have a, we have a position there that's the same title and everything. Why wouldn't they pay for the one that's there? Are we already providing this service to the schools?
Mr. Baldwin?
These are new positions. I want to point out, if I may, the cyber security administer, excuse me, cyber security administrator, was a position that was created last year by ordinance and is funded, it has not been filled, but it was funded in this year's FY22, this year's budget. These two application specialists, senior and regular, one of which is to be funded by the schools, if they were to not, or the position was cut, then that's the prerogative of the council.
So, there's no guarantee that this is being funded because they can cut at any time? So, then we're left with an employee here, or are we going to cut that employee if the funding's cut with it? Because we're adding more and more OPEB to this whole budget, you know? Other employment benefits are all included in this stuff, healthcare is all included in this stuff. When we start looking at all of these positions, and to me, these two positions, and I'm still going to stick to my guns, should not be budgeted the way they are, then I don't see where the reimbursement is in this budget, so right now. Even though it's here, I don't see the point where I'm seeing there's a transfer of funds coming or a reduction in this budget by that amount. So, I should be able to reduce this budget by that amount and still keep the position because the school department's going to give you the funding for it. So, the net, it should be a net zero in the end.
Before we continue, it is 10:01. This is one of councillor Mercier's favorite motion to go past 10. So, I need a motion to continue the meeting beyond 10, Rule 5. Second a motion by councillor Mercier, second by councillor Robinson. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chau?
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor Mercier?
Yes.
Councillor Noon?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rourke?
Yes.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yum?
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
We now continue with the meeting. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is the net funding that's included in the budget. So, it is, the salary and wages permanent account for the MIS department is net of the school funding. If the schools chose not to fund the position, it would not be filled.
Okay. I would, I would stick with the motion, and if the school funds it, they can use, they can fund the one that's already there. Thank you.
Foran, do you have something else to add on that point?
If I may, councillor. Not unlike many of the other departments in the city that provide day-to-day operational services and additional project-based services, MIS focuses very hard on maintaining current operations and delivering projects that allow us to expand our services for constituents as well as internal operational elements. Typically, the core things within an IT department are just considered help desk, systems administration, and network administration, but we are a very different organization in terms of the city delivering many other services, whether they're mapping services, whether they're wide area network services, whether they're telemetry for things throughout the city, running fiber to integrate things, whether it's the school buildings that are all integrated and tied in over the network that we manage. From an application perspective, we have over 40 different components within Munis that we utilize throughout the organization, and our current resources are significantly tapped in being able to deliver the services that we already do. That's one of the reasons why schools has never specifically funded a position, even though there is a school maintenance component that's handled separately. They agreed that they wanted to have specific services that we already leverage to be available on the school side, and the only way that we could effectively deliver that to them and assist them with that was to have a position dedicated that they would fund in order to move those projects forward.
Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the MIS director. Can you tell me when the last time a application specialist was added to your department?
I want to say four years ago, maybe? Maybe four years prior to the pandemic.
Thank you. And as an IT person myself, I can say that the landscape has changed significantly over those four years, at least for me. I can imagine that your situation is the same. I know that you talked about the increase in resources that you needed to have to be able to support remote work, to be able to bring these new systems online, et cetera, et cetera. Can you speak a little bit to the requested increase for the repair and maintenance of equipment line item? It's going from $60,000 in FY22 to $94,000 in FY23.
Yes, that line item includes a variety of things that have changed, and as with everything else that's gone up, we've also introduced new elements in the city. One of the things that we did during the pandemic was we, we had to lock down the building all of a sudden. So, we had to introduce the ability to lock offices. And while that has been a thorn in some folks' sides because they've been locked out at times, and we've had to get folks badges very quickly, all of the stuff that's been installed throughout the building to lock offices, those were done under a contract, a state contract, and maintenance is coming due on those. So, there's going to be significant maintenance on those. There's also been an increase in maintenance specific to equipment that, that we have in-house that has gone up, and with our service contracts for servicing our PCs and everything, they had a 6% increase alone because of all the, all the costs associated with delivering those services.
Thank you. I know that personally, in my job, it's been, it's been tough to get my hands on equipment recently, and that has come with these increased costs, increased lead times, and increased frustration for, for my staff and for the end users who rely on the equipment at the end of the day. What kind of experiences have you had in that environment that's driving your costs up?
Well, I mean, everyone knows that purchasing anything is being delayed, whether it's purchasing a car that you can't purchase because of the chips in it, or whether it's purchasing a vacuum cleaner, Electrolux, you can't, you can't find them nowadays for parts that are being shut, that aren't, the factories are shut down in China. The same thing is happening with technology. Most of technology's been off-sourced, it's mostly built out in China. Everyone knows China is in a major lockdown, and everything has been shut down. So, lead times for any equipment right now has been challenging. We've been fortunate with many of the vendors that we work with in terms of being able to find things, or sometimes they'll just let us know, we give them a list, and, and they'll just come back to us and say, okay, we, we just found this right now, is it something you're still interested in? Yes, let's get it, you know, going, we'll get a requisition in immediately so that we can acquire the equipment that we need, whether it's equipment that's been assisting public works, or equipment that's been assisting other departments so that they can all complete and deliver on their missions. So, it's been challenging for everybody in every sense in terms of being able to get equipment. During the pandemic, everyone certainly was impacted. The ability for the MIS team, which like the rest of the teams the manager has, we are very fortunate to have a very good team that while we hear from vendors who come to meet with us, oh, wow, you guys don't need any of this because you're already doing it with the team you have. We're also experiencing many of the same problems that we have with trying to acquire personnel, like the traffic engineer, the cybersecurity position, no different. We had, have that posted multiple times, and as we received many applicants, we wound up with candidates that were great candidates but wanted to work from Dominican Republic or from other states, and we made it clear they had to have their boots on the ground here in Lowell. We went so far as to get a offer out to an applicant, and during the, during the onboarding process, things fell through, and we had to start all over. So, we've experienced everything in terms of not just supply delays, but also personnel delays to hire personnel.
Thank you. My last question is just, in the four years since we've added a position to your department, does anybody know what the change in head count has been across the city, unfortunately? The CFO stepped out, so he's probably the best situated to answer this question.
Mr. Manager?
Councillor will be able to get that answer for you in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'll defer to my colleagues then. Thank you.
Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that councillor Gitchia asked you this question regarding the application specialist that we, the city have had. The one that we have had, not the one that proposed, you know, open, that paid for by the school. The one that we have had, have, they've been, this individual been, provide service to the school?
We all provide services to the school in a variety of capacities. However, the level of services we provide to them are typically related to someone starting, someone's moving, we're changing their access from one school to another. We haven't been able to really make many inroads working with them on leveraging other tools that we are delivering on the city side, whether it includes tools like the employee self-service tools, or tools like, as we're looking at, Munis recruiting and applicant tracking. Those tools require a significant amount of resources to be dedicated in setting up the backend of tables and structures and whatnot. So, when we worked with schools on the idea and the concept of having a dedicated person, their complaint was, look, we want to be able to do the stuff that you guys are doing. When can we get scheduled to do that? And our response was, well, our priority is really the city projects that we have lined up. So, we could look at them within three to six months, and they were like, well, maybe we should go spend $2 million and, and buy a completely different product instead of leveraging what the city is already using. And that's when we approached them with the concept of having them cross-fund a position for us.
So, the city MIS has been providing service to the school for a number of years?
Yes, sir, on a limited basis, and I believe there is a maintenance of effort associated with it.
The school specifically said that we want to see a second application specialist, that this one will be paid for by the school?
They specifically asked for us to deliver services to them that we're unable to do, that we're unable to deliver in a timely manner without having someone dedicated in that capacity. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Councillor Janess, do you want to continue that question now that CFO is back, or are you also?
If you don't mind, the question was just, what is the change in overall city employee head count over the past four years? Sorry, I'll give you time to research.
Councillor, would it be possible to come back to that question? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any comment? Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm just still having trouble wrapping my head around the idea that this isn't a school department-funded position. We're talking about efficiencies that need to happen within the school department, and I feel like we're kind of pushing this with the school department. It doesn't seem like it's something that they really want. Am I understanding that correct?
So, I can understand your, your concern, councillor. Could you ask it a different way to make sure I understand it?
I'm just asking why it's not funded through the school department? Is it because they're not agreeing to fund it through the school department? Is that what's...
Well, they, they spoke with us about funding it, which is why it's listed with a cross-fund in the budget on the assumption that they will fund it. But if they choose not to, then we wouldn't move forward with the position, though they have told us that, yes, they want these services, and the options are pretty straightforward. Either they can go out and spend millions of dollars getting parallel systems to what we have in place right now, or they can fund a position in MIS, and this had some back and forth because they wanted the position to be located in their office, and we made it clear that any such position would require a high level of administrative access and be subject to our policies, both at the MIS department and citywide for our computing policies. And so, the position had to be working shoulder to shoulder with the other application folks that we have in order to ensure that it would be successful and we'd be able to deliver for them the same level of services that they want, in line with what we're doing here on the city side.
So, if they end up not funding the position, that money is going to go back to the contingency account, or how, how is that going to work? That's not going to stay within that line? I don't know if Mr. Baldwin can answer that?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
I apologize, we were looking up the employee count there. Could you repeat that?
Oh, I said, if the school department does not agree to fund that position, does that money go back into the contingency account?
No.
Or does it sit there in the MIS budget?
It's a net-net proposal. So, if it's not funded by the school department, then there's no expenditure on the city side.
Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
Has this position been presented to the, to the school?
Yes, councillor. It had been discussed with the school prior within fiscal '22.
So, but I'm saying, this year, this, this creation of this, has anyone approached the schools and said, do you want to foot this and create this position on your side since that's what it's geared towards?
Yes.
And their answer was?
They were very receptive through the better part of the year. I, I guess I can't say with all certainty that they're still willing to fund it at this point.
Thank you.
Councillor Janess again? You want to continue with the line of question to the CFO again?
Just curious if he had, if he was able to come up with it. Councillor Gitchia was able to pull a number over here, so.
Councillor Gitchia?
The, the number in, I gotta get glasses because I can't see anymore. The number in 2020 was, in 19 was 1,075 employees, and today, in this year's budget, it's 1132 with a difference of 57.
Thank you, councillor Gitchia.
If I may add something on that, I think there's a note about how those numbers were calculated based on advisory membership boards as FTEs.
That's right. Councillor, if you're counting the table inside the budget, there was a change in one of the fiscal years, maybe two or three years ago, where boards and commissions, so employees, employees, they receive a stipend, were counted in the employee count, but prior to that, they were not. So, that may be overstating the numbers a little bit.
Okay, if no other comments on the MIS, there's a motion on the floor, a second, to reduce the budget by Mr. Clerk, what was the exact amount again?
$186,017.
Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Chau?
No.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
No.
Councillor Leahy?
No.
Councillor Mercier?
No.
Councillor Noon?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rourke?
No.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yum?
No.
Motion fails.
The next item on the agenda is the law, which we have taken up already earlier. We now go to the next line item, 2023-37 and -38, which is the elections, and is that through Madam Solicitor, is still the director still handling the elections office? Any comments or questions for the elections department? Councillor Gitchia?
Through you to the city manager. Have we had any luck with an elections commissioner at the salary that is based in here? I'm director, I'm sorry, director.
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Yes, we have two applicants at this time.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here on now, we now go to the next line item, 2023-39 and -40, planning and development. Do we have the director here?
Good evening, Christine McCall, DPD Director.
Do you have any comments or questions for the plan development department? Anyone else? Councillor Gitchia?
We have, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. We're requesting five new positions. Are they all coming off of the budget? Are they being funded through some other source? Or, we have a principal clerk, a sanitary code inspector, a new wire inspector, an energy advocate, which I'm really interested in hearing what that does. And obviously, the ARPA project manager is not used in the budget, but the other four, are they all coming from the budget, or is that something... from the budget, or is that something ARPA picks up some of it?
I can't answer that. The only new positions are the Energy Advocate and the ARPA, no, excuse me, the Energy Advocate and a new full-time Wire Inspector. We right now have one full-time Wire Inspector, and then we supplement with two on-call inspectors. The idea is that we would have two full-time Wire Inspectors and then have one on-call Inspector to help off-hours, you know, if we can't get in touch with somebody. You know, 80% of all permits that come in have an electrical component. We have one electrical inspector right now, and he's both responsible for large citywide projects, but also residential projects. And so it is a drain on his time. And so we do think for efficiency, both of our own projects, but also to, you know, improve customer service to residents, that it's important to have that position. The Principal Clerk position has always been within our budget. It just hasn't been funded. And we are, actually, there's two that say they're vacant in here. One started about a month ago, and the second Principal Clerk will be starting on Monday. So it is currently funded in our department budget.
Could you tell us what the Energy Advocate is going to do?
I would be glad to. The purpose of the position, we're funding it through the National Grids Community First Partnership Grant Program, so it is going to be 100% grant-funded. The Energy Advocate will work to increase access and participation in MassSave Energy Efficiency Programs. The city has historically been underserved in MassSave program, resulting in higher energy costs for residences, businesses within the city. So to remedy this neglect, the utility companies are actually offering funding to support a local position to focus on creating programs and partnerships to help engage residents and businesses with these programs. There is a history for this proposal. We were in front of the City Council Technology and Utilities Subcommittee back in 2021, and we were just, we had a robust conversation on how to mitigate costs to the taxpayer as a result of our city's community choice aggregation increased cost. So we do think the cost of energy, the cost of energy continues to increase for our residents and businesses. In the past three years, prices have significantly increased, and we're hoping this position will help address those.
You have three positions that have energy, trying to reduce energy costs. We're part of the Green Initiative communities, but we keep buying vehicles that have, they're way over in any green community. We watched the Water Department buy an Explorer that, just recently, that they drive around to go to the intake station and back, which it's not a hybrid, it's just a straight gas vehicle. Do any of these positions oversee the purchase of the Green Initiative vehicles, or is it something that we just, because even looking, I just looked over my shoulder and saw the chief. So I even look at police vehicles the same way. So why can't they be police interceptor vehicles that are hybrid, that run both ways? And do we have any positions in here that would cover something like that, so that every purchase of vehicle would have to go through a certain regiment to even be purchased? Because we're wasting gas, and it's not turning the corner the other way.
That's a really great question, and actually, very timely. I haven't had the opportunity to talk about it with the administration. But our Energy Manager that we have now is absolutely fantastic. And the hiring of an Energy Advocate will actually take a lot of things off of her plate. And she actually sent me an electrical vehicle ordinance for us to consider. So it is something that's on our radar, but not something that we can prioritize, given the current staffing that we have for the Energy Team.
We did become, I don't even know that an ordinance needs to be sent through, but I'd be welcome to see it. But we are part of the green community, so we should be following that pattern. But we're not. And one of the things is that when you start looking at the vehicle purchases, and that's why we're waiting for the vehicle list from the manager's office to say that, okay, here's the vehicles we have, okay, here's how old they are, what's the purchase date, how long is it going to take us to get these things so that we can actually order something that's going to fit the need of the community? But I thank you, and I think this position is welcomed, because if it works as designed, it's going to have a drastic cost savings. Thank you.
Any other comments or question? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. So just, so to what Counselor Gitchia was saying, so we are going to hire another Wire Inspector?
If approved in the, tonight, then we will be posting to hopefully hire, starting July 1.
All right. And he helps out, like you said, with the residential?
So our current Wire Inspector, you know, does, you know, responds to residents and private development permits, you know, reviews and issues those permits, as well as providing the permit support for all city projects.
Okay, all right. That's a big problem with getting inspections, so this will help out tremendously. So look forward to that. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on Planning Development? We now go to the next line item, 2023-41 and -42, Police. The Chief can introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Mayor Barry Golna, the interim Superintendent of Police.
Welcome, Chief. Any questions or comments for the Chief? Counselor Gitchia?
This is like a continuation. Thank you, Chief. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Chief. When we look at this year's budget, we see that there's a transfer out of court time of $100,000. And it wasn't really spent, even year-to-date with that taking out. They only spent $177,350 that was appropriated. And then there's also the shift differential piece, where there's a large sum left over of the initial, there was transfers in. Are these areas that we can reduce? And if not, could you explain why that that is the way it is?
Absolutely. So most of the overages for this year, you'll see, are a result of, we had up until May, through the course of the year, roughly 20 police officer positions open. So the beginning of May, we put 15 in the police academy and hired five more that were certified officers that are going through the training program. Also, throughout the course of the year, we've tried to fill eight to 10 dispatcher vacancies, as well as a few other ancillary positions throughout the department. So all of the costs with the court time, comp time, and some of those others, Counselor, are a result of all those attrition positions, positions we lost, excuse me, due to attrition over the course of the year, as well as the salaries and wages that you see, that there's some extra money that I'm sure that the CFO will be taking from us shortly, so.
So in my opinion, I think that your overall budget can be cut by $150,000, just looking at the transfers and the numbers that are left at the end. And that would be my recommendation, is to cut the bottom line of the police account by $150,000. I'd like to file that as a motion.
Counselor by, Counselor Gitchia, to reduce the police budget by $150,000. Do we have a second? Second, second by Counselor Scott. Any more discussions or questions? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Meachow.
No.
Counselor Drinkwater.
No.
Counselor Gitchia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
No.
Counselor Leahy.
No.
Counselor Mercier.
No.
Counselor Noon.
No.
Counselor Robinson.
No.
Counselor Rourke.
No.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor Yem.
No.
Motion fails.
Any other questions, comment for the Chief? Here on none. Thank you, Chief. We'll go to the next line item.
Thank you.
2023-43 and -44, the Fire Department. Chief, would you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, Chief Sharon Law Fire.
Welcome, Chief. And Counselor Rourke?
Mr. Mayor, while we have Chief Sharon here, can we do 3.9 as well?
It means that we had two temporary deputy chiefs, and we had three temporary lieutenants. But it is not indicative of a change in our request for FY '23.
My question is more so geared towards the dollar figure, the bottom line. What does, will this cost the residents to make these promotions?
There is a fund for increases related to changes within promotional status. But what that depends on is, it depends on how many people end up either on a long-term sick leave or injury. It changes from year to year.
I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, to the CFO. There's an increase in the personnel because we're going to reduce down firefighter positions and put the promotional positions in. So there's a delta between a firefighter and the deputy, the assistant chief, or even the deputy chief, where there's two of them added, and you're seeing three lieutenants added. And when you look at the three lieutenants, you see that there's 221 people here in that, that are budgeted there, and they're not all firefighters. But if you look at the firefighters at 213, and you take 46 of them, lieutenants, and then you look, you got deputy chiefs, so that's 57 of them. And then you got captains, that's 71 of them. And then you got the assistant chief, that's 72. And then you look at the chief, that's 73 positions out of 213 are promotional-level positions. What I'm questioning is, how much is the cost to this budget for the five promotions that are there? And do we have them outlined, whether it's going from a captain to an assistant chief, or a deputy chief to a captain? I'm wondering what that dollar amount is, and how did we figure it out in this budget? To budget it is a difference. So that's the question, more or less.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand your question correctly, Counselor, what you're looking for is an accounting of the cost for, I think the Chief explained, the reasoning for what appears as a discrepancy in the personnel listing, because at the point in time when the staffing table was created, there were temporary officers and temporary senior officers. If what I'm, if what I'm hearing you ask is, is that accounted for separately for the time when the senior officer is in the position, but that other position may be out on injury, the delta for that senior officer who's in a temporary status? We do not account for it in a separate account where it's a number I can just point to. That would be something we could get a report for you, if I'm understanding that. Chief, maybe? Yeah, so traditionally, any changes like that would come through salaries and wages. And then, basically, that has been our past practice to do that. And since the department has traditionally not been able to get itself up to 213 personnel, we utilize other locations, other people who are vacant. So for example, right now, I'm short 14 personnel, and we would utilize those to take the place of that.
Maybe I'm just not understanding it, and I'm trying to understand it, is, these two new positions, say Deputy Chief, will they be permanent Deputy Chiefs?
There is no new Deputy Chief positions. There is no new lieutenant positions.
That's what it says here, right?
What you're looking at is a snapshot of what Munis is showing, being paid out during that particular timeframe, which is some point in April of 2022. The funding within the line item, inside these, the salaries and wages, is specific to the numbers that you see in FY '22. That being 14 captains, nine deputy chiefs, 146 personnel, 43 lieutenants.
I think you're confusing the two. I'm not even looking at Munis. I'm just looking at the budgeted number of deputy chiefs. Last year, you had nine budgeted. You have 11 this year. What is the increase in the budget to add those two positions? That's all I'm asking. I'm not even looking at Munis. Munis didn't have any play in this. So I'm just trying to figure out what the delta is in personnel by the addition of these five increases. Is there one, or are we deleting it out of overtime? Because someone was being paid out of salary, out of salary, out of grid, is what you're saying to me. But what I'm trying to figure out is, this is a budgeted budget, and it has, like, say, the Assistant Fire Chief is $150,000. I can see that number, because there wasn't one before. So there's a $150,000 delta. But you're saying that somebody's going to leave one position and get into this, and their old position is now going to be deleted at the lowest level, the firefighter level?
Position won't be, will not be deleted from the bottom level. It just will be vacant, funded, but vacant.
So every one of them's an increase by the actual amount that it says? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the Chief. When we go down the list here, replace, repair, apparel, is that the turnout gear and things like that?
Yes, Counsel, that's correct.
All right. So that's, that dropped quite a bit. Is that because of the recent purchases?
It does help us with the recent purchases. It is dependent from year to year on our call volume and the beating that the gear takes. It does have a shelf life.
Right, but it dropped down quite, well, the recommendation, but?
Yes, the recommendation did drop it down by above 14, somewhere around 14 grand.
All right. And then firefighter supplies. There were a couple high years in 2021. What's, what's that again?
So that can be anything from special gear that firefighters carry, rescue bags, things of that nature, so that they can self-evacuate the building, flashlights, and other specialty hand tools that they may be using.
Okay. All right. Guess that was it. Thank you.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Chief. I'm looking at your expenses on the improvement and repair. To me, it seemed very low. So is that $3,700 for improvement buildings, repair, maintenance buildings, $46,25? It's very low. Is that, is that accurate, sir? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I apologize, Counselor. Are you looking for the repair and maintenance of equipment? Buildings?
Yeah, way on the bottom, on your expenses.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, way in the bottom, right. Those two, to me, look low, but, you know, if you could do that, that's great. But I fixed my house, cost more than that, so that's why. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions?
Just one.
Counselor Leahy?
Just through you to the manager. I'm sure we all would, but some of these, like the improvements to buildings and repairs, and then replacement apparel, just like to see those increase over the next budgets if we can, or just explain where we might supplement that. But I just think that's an item in here that should go up, and we probably all think it should go up, but just wanted to point that out for further budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Manager, any comments on that?
Nope, Counsel is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
Another area I notice, and again, with inflation, I see in FY '22, $87,875 for gas and motor oil. It's level-funded, again, $87,875. With the cost of gas right now, I mean, I don't know how we're going to get through, what we need to get through with the same amount from a year ago. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Counselor. That's, once again, a contingency fund from the manager's side. We're in hopes that this thing will fluctuate back down, but that's obviously why it's going to be there as well.
Thank you. Counselor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the chief. I noticed that in overtime, 2022 was 1.1 million. I thought FY '22 was more than that, way more than that. Is that correct?
Mr. Manager, through Mr. Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is a function of how the, how the budget's displayed. It shows the approved amount for FY '22, but Counselor, your recollection is correct. There were supplemental appropriations within, within the current year before we set the tax rate to increase that overtime number, well, well in excess of-
Wasn't it $2.6 million?
That sounds, that sounds right.
Chief, now FY '23, you're asking for 1.5. Is that sustainable?
I sure hope so.
You're not sure?
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Your, so Counselor Nune? Counselor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, our fire trucks run on diesel, right?
That is correct.
And if you notice the price at the pump, gas is expensive, but diesel is out of sight, isn't it?
Certainly is.
Is it possible we could somehow, next time we buy a vehicle, I don't know if we could go electric, but could we just go gas instead of diesel, or does it have to run on diesel?
I, we could go gas. There are gas options, but especially with the heavy, heavy vehicles, they're both more expensive and they're less efficient.
So diesel is the thing?
Diesel provides the power that we need to get things done. There are, in their infant stages, electrical options. Most of those electrical options also include a smaller diesel engine. And some of the options that we would have for the fire department are still not readily available. For example, they don't make an electric lada truck.
Well, it was just a point of information. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Real quick, I noticed about $110,000 increase in out-of-grade compensation from FY '22 to FY '23. Is that a tool being utilized to kind of preserve that 1.5 in overtime? Or why, why is that increase for out-of-grade compensation? There were alternatives to use in grade when, you know, necessary?
Mr. Baldwin?
Shall I answer?
Go through the chief.
Through, through the manager, Mr. Baldwin, the mayor, to you, Counselor. The out-of-grade compensation is based on a firefighter who is acting within an officer's rank. So a lieutenant or a captain is out during a shift, and a senior firefighter is promoted temporarily during the shift to act in that capacity.
But my question is, is that happening more frequently, or do you anticipate that happening more frequently? Because it's $110,000 increase in, in that line item.
I believe some of the increase that you're seeing is in relation to the last negotiation, collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. Baldwin, you have something to add to that?
The chief has the, the right point there. Just to add a, a little bit more detail, in many areas of the budget, we talked about this earlier, but in the FY '22 column in these salary-related items, that did not include the most recent round of contracts. And so the FY '23 manager proposal accounts for the 2023 year as well as the 2022 COLA. So for things like out-of-grade compensation, it compounds year over year. So that, that accounts for the large percentage of the increases.
Thank you.
Counselor Kishia?
Chief, I wasn't very secure with your answer on overtime. You requested the $1.5 million. This year, year-to-date, you've already spent, well, year-to-date, on May 31st, over $2 million. What has changed during this year, come July 1st? Because we all agreed on the same thing, there was going to be no company closings. And in here, I read 427 projected. What has changed for next fiscal year so that no companies are closed? Because since no companies have been closed, I personally feel that we've done an unreal job, and I think even before, but I just think that we got to the next level. What has changed and that's going to happen in next fiscal year versus this fiscal year that we're going to be able to cut at least $500,000? But I see, this doesn't even account for June yet. So this is probably going to be more like 1.3, I mean, 2.3 million that's going to be spent in this fiscal year. So can you help us understand what's changed from FY '22 to FY '23? And this is your request. So it says requested from the department head would be you. Could you please explain what the changes?
Chief?
Certainly. So 1.5 million is based on, a request based on the fact that at that particular point in time, we were not opening all the companies. We were shutting down a truck during the day. And that request is also based on the fact that I expected that we would be able to put more personnel into the fire academy, and I would have 213 personnel.
So now is the time to give the answer? Because what we're looking at is, you're saying that an old agreement with one company being closed, and you, now you can't get personnel. So what I'm hearing you say to me is that this is not going to be efficient enough, and that it's here. And you just answered Counsel Robinson with, or one of the counselors with, it was sufficient enough, but it really wasn't a secure sufficient enough. So I don't want to come back midway through this budget next year and say, okay, here we are, companies are closing, and start looking to the manager and asking him why companies are closing, when we were just told here that they were. But then on further questioning, you said it was a point in time that had companies closing and we didn't have firefighters that can get through the academy. Are we going to be able to get more firefighters through the academy before July 1st? That's going to drop this thing down to the 1.5 level? Are you confident in that?
Are we going to get before this time?
Well, that's what the budget starts. It starts July 1st.
We're getting one individual. We just got him.
So you're not confident in this 1.5 number is what I'm hearing from you?
Right.
Okay, so we need to make a decision here. If we want to keep companies open, on what we're going to do. Because that's what I'm hearing from the fire chief. I'm not hearing that, you know, he has a good feeling that we're going to make it through. So there has to be some way of looking at this, through you, Mayor Chow, to the manager. You know, you just heard, there's a deficit in that. And we all have agreed, sitting here, that we were going to fund this fully to keep people safe. So I don't know if opera funding can go into this area, or if there's some other revenue source that can go into this area. But I think that's a commitment from all of us here, is to make sure, before any people get promoted or anything. That was our number one goal. Thank you.
Counselor Yen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a comment. A month ago, the chief came and talked about the fire trucks, and I turned around and asked the question, is there an electric fire truck? And the chief was saying, well, the city can't afford it. So what I did is, I did some research, and there's a company in Wisconsin that built a hybrid. It's a hybrid that has the same power as the, the regular diesel truck. So I will get that information to the chief and to the manager. I told the managers about it, and he would like to see. I know it costs a little bit more, but there's an offset in, in federal grants when you have a hybrid electric vehicle. So we can have that rebate as well, so. So I just want to let you know that, Chief, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the chief, the assistant to the chief, to you. Is that a union or non-union position?
It's not a union position.
So I, I just comment to that then. I think this position's certainly going to help address some of the overtime, as well as other training that needed at the fire department. This individual certainly is going to be a huge help to the chief in a number of front. So, you know, given that this is not a union, and this is not, this is a non-servoservice position, I think it's, it's addressing a number of concerns that is overtime, as well as training and so on, that the chief need. Because I know that they have, he has nine deputy fire chief, but those, all those nine deputy fire chief, I believe, a union position. Therefore, it's not much help to the chief in this. That's how, that's just how I feel. Thank you.
Counsel, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're bouncing around a little bit here, but I want to just revisit the point that Counselor Kishia was making to the chief, or his line of questioning to the chief about, you know, what if we end up in a position where midway through the fiscal year and we're realizing that the overtime account actually isn't sufficient to maintain the policy of no companies closing? To go back to a topic we discussed earlier tonight, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, could this potentially be a purpose that we could go into the manager's contingency account to say if it's, if it's a priority of the administration, priority of the council to continue to not have company closures? Could this be a potential reason to use some of that contingency funding to, you know, say, supplement the, the overtime account as we did this year?
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Counsel. That would be correct, Counselor. Once again, this would be those opportunities. I tried to stay vague where we're going to try to spend some of this money, but I think what the chief was trying to do is trying to put his best foot forward on this $1.5 million to try to keep it there. I know we've been talking about trying to even push people into different directions throughout the state to get these firefighters in, I believe there's four academies out there, chief, maybe five. So that is correct, Counsel.
Absolutely. And I just want to note, you know, this is a number, the one and a half million in the overtime account. I mean, you look back to the, the FY '20 number, I mean, we're sent, we've essentially doubled the overtime account. And I don't want to downplay the significance of that investment. It is significant, and, you know, we began, you know, really in earnest discussing company closures, you know, within the last two years, and really trying to make an impact there. So this is a significant investment, and hopefully we can, we can get there and balance that with, you know, bring more firefighters onto trucks so that, you know, this number really, really does do the job in, in terms of that. But just wanted to note that, you know, one, one more reason why, you know, if there is a supplemental appropriation that's needed, and it, and it is determined to be a priority midway through the year, that there are sources of funding that could be utilized. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Here, none. Thank you, chief. We'll now go to the next line item on the agenda. It's 2023-45, which is the law public schools. Any comments or questions? Here, none. We'll now go to the 2023-46.
Mr. Mayor, can I recuse myself from the next line item? Thank you.
Sure, Counselor. The next line item, dash 46, is a grade-low, grade-low technical school. Any comments or questions? Here, none. We go to the next line item, 2023-47, Essex Afro-Cultural High School. Any comments or questions? Here, none. The next line item, which is dash 48, dash 49, is the DPW administration. We took up that item already. We now will, will discuss the other categories, sub-departments of DPW, which are engineering, land and buildings, electrical, street, waste collection and disposal, and other items. Let's see, one more? Snow and ice, yeah. DPW others, snow and ice. Mr. Bernhardt introduced himself early already. Any comments or questions for Mr. Bern? Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have one question around trash collection. I'm looking at the Munis report, and it shows a transfer out from that account for $982,539. I just wanted to see if you could address why there was so much surplus in that account? We've been talking about trash and recycling shortages all evening. Thank you.
Through Mr. Managers to Mr. Bern? Or Mr. Baldwin?
I'd be happy to respond to the question. Mr. Bern has, has only been in the position for a short period of time. The overage in the FY 2022 budget, or the surplus that became available, has to do with a couple of things. One being, we estimated a high usage in FY 2022. So the, the departmental submission from the former DPW commissioner was based on a very conservative estimate. The second part being that the, the trash contract was amended, and so the weight, the barrel collection was taken out of the contract, and there was a savings realized as a component of that. So those two factors together account for the largest variance. It is our expectation that next year, we have a fuel adjustment clause in the contract that will take in, it will take effect July 1. And then that coupled with our projections for waste, we do think that next year, the amount budgeted is sufficient. I hope that addresses your question in part.
Is the amount excessive for next year? Do you think we're actually going to spend that full amount?
So what we have budgeted for next year is, in the contract, it, it calls for 4.9 million just in waste management. That's collection, picking up our solid waste, our recycling and yard waste. The tipping fee is $81 a ton. We estimate right now approximately 28,000 tons. So that's 2.2 right there. So we're up to 7.1. The fuel adjustment cost, approximately, if we, if it holds through for 12 months, we're hoping it doesn't, but if it does, we're looking at another 200,000. So you're, you're at seven, you're at 7.2, 7.3, right, right there. So that's what, that's what we're looking at. It's a firm contract. Obviously, the solid waste disposal, when you're taking it to wheel abrider and you're picking it up at the residence, it's, it's a sliding skill. Right now, we're, we're averaging about 26, 26.5. We probably project that we're going to go higher because the cost of fuel, people staying home, people having more cookouts and, and staying at their house, we're going to generate more trash. Hopefully, we can raise the recycling rates for the people that are at their homes and through education, getting into schools, doing presentations, going into, you know, neighborhood associations and doing small presentations to increase our recycling rates. And that's, that's what we're shooting for.
Mr. Baldwin, did you have something else to add?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add as a, a point of information on the FY 2022 trash budget, that, that amount that was available in the trash budget provided some much, one, some much-needed budgetary flexibility within the, the current budget. So about $350,000 or so was, was transferred in order to close out the snow and ice deficit. So that, that amount was available and prevented us from having to carry forward a snow and ice deficit into, into next year. And then it, it provided the funding source for overtime for the parks and the, the streets division to pick up those barrels that are now the city's responsibility. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Kishia?
Thank you to the CFO. If, if all of those transfers were needed and taken out of this account, why didn't we increase the other ones and lower this one for this current year so that it shows that there are issues in those, and here we are? Snow and ice, I understand, can, is a revenue that can go from one fiscal year to another, and you can carry deficits. With that being said, there's a million dollars that could transfer it out, 982,000, and there's still 100,000 left over at the end of this year out of encumbrances. When you look at the recycling piece, you see it was originally appropriated, $75,000. The year-to-date expenses were 19,000, or 25%. So there's still $55,000 left over in the recycling piece that, say, 50 grand at the end of the year, if you base it off of the percentages that have been used through 11 year, 11 months. This account, to me, looks like there is money there, and I would recommend cutting it by the million dollars that could transfer it out, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Motion by Counselor Gitcher. Do you have a second? Second by Counselor Scott. Any more discussion? Counselor Robinson?
Which, which account are we talking right now?
The, Mr. Clerk had used this, or he stated...
We're talking about DPW Waste Collection and Disposal, item 58, 59.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Robinson, your answer? Counselor Nune?
Counselor.
Any more discussions? Mr. Counselor Leahy?
On the motion or overall?
Overall, on the, on both, on the related DPW.
All right. So I threw you to the director, the commissioner, on page 464, the expense details, solid waste collection. There's a line item for cot repairs, but I don't see one for cot replacement. Are we, where are we replacing our cots? Like, does that come out of another line item or?
We are, we purchasing cots right as we speak. We just, we did a $50,000 purchase order within the last month and that's in the process and we should be getting deliveries on those cots momentarily. We do do some repairs. We have a part-time person that works out of the university. He actually is part-time. He's just recently letting, he's going back to another area, back to school. But to answer your question, we, we have the cots on order and we're going to be replacing any new ones that, that need to be repaired. So we're just taking the repair ones from homes and we're just giving them brand new ones.
All right. And that was my other question. So last year, it was, sometimes it was difficult. If a resident called up, you'd have to bring the barrel down and all this and then one of the councils would call and they'd come right out and pick up the barrel for you. So now we're more user-friendly?
We're much user-friendly. We're, we can fit about six or eight barrels in our van. So it does take a little time to get there with the labor force, but we have some people as well. If we have some rainy days, we can put our own street department staff or other people to help deliver those, so we'll make, we'll make it work.
All right. No, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. One of the things, improvement to highways and sidewalks, what exactly is that, that account for the DPW streets? It's, it was 30,000 FY 22 and it's up 15,000. I'm not really sure for sidewalks, are we doing sidewalks in-house now?
I can answer that, Counselor, through you, Mr. Mayor, the council. We do temporary repairs to cement sidewalks that we have to remove some tree issues. We, if there's, we assist other departments if we need to remove, we patch sidewalks. We do some work downtown, the downtown area. We go into neighborhoods throughout the, throughout the city if they need just small repairs. So that's kind of what we do. So we are in that business. We have a concrete person repairing some sidewalks, you know, pretty much all over the place if need be, as long as we can, as long as we get the information from the residents.
But wouldn't that come on the lands and buildings and not DPW streets for the masonry part?
Well, we, we assist, we have the, we have hot top, we repair hot top sidewalks, that it's not all concrete throughout the, in that areas as well.
Thank you. Another question I had is, I see 80,000 put aside for Lulasha. In the event we no longer were responsible for Lulasha or whatever may happen, where would that money, would just go back and be free cash or whatever may happen at the end of the fiscal year? And also under professional services, do you anticipate an increase? Because FY 22 was 30,872 and now we're looking at just 50K flat for professional services. Is there an increase in contracting that we're looking for?
Through Mr. Manager, to Mr. Bern?
On the street side?
This is under DPW Parks Division.
So in the Parks Division, we've, we've experienced, as most counselors know, we've experienced some repairs that we've had to do to the fencing contracts. So our fencing contract has go, has really increased over the last, you know, you know, several, several months and we're trying to accommodate some of the repairs that needed be done. Some of the fencing is old in some, in some of those areas. So that's, that's rising, the contracted services. I know one, one portion of it. I know that for a fact.
But, but there is a line item under fences and matter of fact, we only spent or utilized 50% of the budget from last fiscal year on fence repair in that division.
That's going to, that's going to go up, I guarantee you, over the next, we have some things that are pending that we're just getting, waiting for the contractors to come in and do the thing. So we're going to get, we're going to get bills with over the next three or four weeks because we have several of those parks that are going to be repaired in some areas around the city. Godrails, you know, I can, I can go on and name some streets. I'm not going to do that right now, but that's where, we're doing some guardrail repairs, we're doing some fencing repairs in those areas.
So between the two accounts, the 75 is pretty much for fences and guardrails?
No, it's, it's for other areas. I think that one of the reasons why it went up and increased because we anticipate some of the repairs that we had to need. There's other contracted services that we do in parks that, you know, you know, we might need to rent some equipment, you know, repairs to lawnmowers or things that we can't, we repair in-house. So off the top of my head, I'm, you know, I'm not too familiar with some of the stuff that there, but that's where I know there is some increases in some of that and for services rendered that we don't have the, the ability to do in-house.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin, do you have something to add?
Yeah, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to add some information, looking through the professional services account in, in the parks. This is also the, the account that the department uses for, for uniforms, for the employees. Those are contractually required costs. Also the signs that are put up in the parks. This is the, the budget that pays for those signs and various, you know, keys and locks for fences in the parks are some of the other expenditures this count is used for.
Okay, thank you.
Your answer, Counselor Robinson? Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is around the line item for overflow bags. So the item was originally budgeted last year, 27,750, and then there was a transfer in for 45,000. So it brought it to 72,750. This year, we've budgeted 40,000. And my question is just around how that process is working with the overflow bags. Are they self-funding? Like, are we receiving enough in receipts to cover the bags? And also, is that paying?
Yeah, I think the revenue, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. I think we, we, our expenditures, I think, might have been around $75,000 for the bags and we took in about 223,000.
Okay, so that covered the tipping charges and everything for the bags themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then my next question was actually on a line item that's called building supplies. With 67,500, we transferred in 50,000, but the account right now was only expended at 66%.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Let me find, I don't have the line in this year's though. No, that's not it. Actually, I'll just, I'll skip on that one just, I don't have the this year's amount, so I'm not sure if we changed the appropriation for this year. But yeah, we transferred in 50,000 last year. It ended up being 117,500 for building supplies.
Yeah, we've been doing, buying various supplies, trying to get into the schools, doing different, different things. So I know we've been, we're doing some building, you know, out at Alumni Field. We're doing some repairs to various handicap ramps out at the, out of that Pacific Park. I know we're buying building supplies, paint and everything and painting municipality buildings. We're doing some renovations, I believe, at the Civic Center and at DPD and other various things. So we are buying a lot of supplies and we're going to continue to buy them through the, to get ready for the summer, for getting into the schools and areas that we need to get into.
Thank you.
Your answer, Counselor Scott? Counselor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Commissioner, Commissioner Burnt. On page 453, under DPW Land and Building, listed under here, DPW various school project, you requesting $300,000. Could you list some of those projects to school?
So the on-call trade services that we, we bring in are, you know, the HVAC technicians is part of a contracted services that we bring in, on-call trade services that we need, we need assistance and help out. There's also other various school improvements projects that we need to, we need to bid, bid jobs and, and outside of our regular capital improvements budget.
And those are your projected costs for FY 23, is that correct?
That's what, that's what I'm being told, yes, by the people that are running that department. Again, this is my, you know, fifth week at the, at the position and I rely on the people that put some of this budget together and I trust them and I know that we have a lot of work to do in various school areas and municipality areas to get our handle, hand around it and especially HVAC area.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor, the CFO. On page 459, on the bottom, Lulasha Park Repair and Maintenance. In FY 22, we asking for 80,000. Did we use any of those money? Did we repair Lulasha Park last year?
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, Counselor, we have under contract a vendor for the maintenance of the field at Lulasha. And this is the, this is the budgetary account, we pay that contract.
Thank you.
Your answer, Counselor Nune? Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Commissioners. For my own education, I'm looking at DPW, the Lands and Building, and I noticed the personnel salary and overtime amount to 1.637 million compared to other department like engineering, electrical, the street, even the park, you know, their personnel is not as high as, well, the park is about the same as Lands and Building. What do Lands and Building do? Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bern?
They handle any on-call services related to HVAC, heating, plumbing, leaks in buildings. They, they get, they get a bunch of calls. Anything boarding up a building that they can't get into, they have to get into schools or something, they get, they're on-call, they're working overtime. They also, we utilize them to be able to get into schools and different, different areas of the schools to take care of some of the major issues that we might have had, like for instance, the major problem, the flood problem that we had in the 1922 building. You know, there was a lot of overtime used. We had to bring in a lot of staff there, but I think it's, it kind of, it's hard to kind of promote as far as what you're going to, what's going to happen on heating or anything. So they're on-call and they got to come in and repair anything for overtime. So there is, there is overtime in those particular positions. They also work, they also work, you know, they help out in various departments as needed, so that overtime comes out of their budget. If we, if we're doing special projects, you know, they might work, they could be working like the Folk Festival and we supplement that overtime. So there's other areas that they, they go outside of their, their scope, but they're willing to do it within 1705.
Just a quick follow-up. How many staff in the Lands and Building? I know you may not have the exact number, but just a ballpark.
There's probably, probably 20, 22, maybe, off the top of my head. I don't know the amount of people. I have it maybe in the book right there. Let me check. No, I don't have it. Sorry. Bear with me.
Take your time, sir.
We have 25 workers in, well, 24 workers and two, one work informant and a deputy commissioner in Lands and Buildings.
Your answer, Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Commissioner.
Sorry for the delay in the answer, but I just was researching it.
That's great. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'm noticing an increase steadily on the electricity at the parks. Is that, does that include ball fields or is that just the usage at Stedman? And again, we've discussed in the past, maybe is that a cycle?
Either Mr. Baldwin or, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This account in the Parks Department also accounts for the lights at all the fields. I don't believe that Ms. Moses is, is here. No. Catherine Moses, the City Energy Manager, I'm sure would have a much more detailed answer, but that, that is not just the building at Stedman Street, the main office, it also is for all the ball fields.
Okay. And is that something potentially we could look down the line like we mentioned before, possible solar installations for some of this stuff?
Through Mr. Baldwin?
I see Mr. Bern is...
Mr. Mayor, to you, to the counselor. As a matter of fact, I recently, within the last couple of days, I've had a conversation with the city electrician, Steve Kuchu, and we want to work with Catherine Moses to see if we can go into the ball fields and start replacing those lights with LED lights. So there is a, there is a process that we want to go through. She's been extraordinarily helpful since I've been here and she's really unbelievable to this, this city, to what's going on here with all the energy conservations that she's helping us through, not only in the schools and all other municipality buildings. So we are, we are working on a plan on that and hopefully I have some more information in, within the next couple of months on that.
Through Mr. Manager, to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more, more point along the same lines, Counselor. Just this morning, after the leadership meeting, Ms. Moses and I had a meeting with some energy companies and we are exploring some additional solar opportunities pursuant to the motion that was passed earlier this, this term. And I think there are a lot of opportunities that we may be able to take advantage of. We look forward to bringing some additional information in the not-so-distant future.
Thank you. That'd be great because from FY 21 to FY 23, you're looking at $62,000 increase in electricity usage just in this one division. So thank you.
Counselor Gitcher?
Just move the motion.
Okay. No other comments or questions? Counselor Leahy?
Just one other quick comment. I just want to thank the Commissioner. It's, I can't believe you've been gone for 20-plus years. It's like you haven't missed a beat, so thank you.
You're welcome.
If no other comments or questions, there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Gitcher to... to cut the budget from the waste collection and disposal only, right, Counselor? Just from that, waste collection disposal only, second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch, ah.
No.
Counselor Drinkwater?
No.
Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
Uh, no.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
No.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yam?
No.
Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Mr. Byrne, Counselor Gishia?
Can I ask that if there's no one else who has, you know, we've been going through this for hours and there hasn't been one cut, so I would suggest that if no one has any more things, we have a group here of department heads who have sat here, that we move to accept the budget as proposed.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercier. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, why don't you read the, read the motion to adopt by the amount, which I believe, Mr. Baldwin can correct me if I'm right, it's four hundred and fifty million, five hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. There've been no reductions.
Is that, the numbers confirmed?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
I thought the total budget was five oh two.
That was, I'm looking at that too, so.
See, I was looking at the number right now, maybe it's.
I thought it was five oh two.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. A motion to accept the budget as proposed, or to take the vote to do that, because I'm not going to vote in favor of the overall budget, but I think that there's a will of the Council to do that.
Okay. Budget, but Counselor, just for clarification, you're not voting on it? We're gonna do a roll call.
We can move to take that, to take that vote, so to skip going through all the line items like we were doing and then take the second vote to vote as a, as a.
What we'll be looking for is, is a motion from the floor, what started from the floor, to adopt a budget of four hundred and fifty million dollars, five hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, as indicated in the vote, so.
So moved, so moved.
By Counselor Mercier and then no other discussion, just a roll call. Was it a motion by Counselor Gishia, was it?
I don't, I don't think he wants to.
Were you making a motion, Counselor Gishia, or were just suggesting it?
I was just suggesting it because, I mean.
So you're not making a motion, so, so Counselor Mercier, you're making a motion and do we have a second?
I, I.
Second by Counselor Drinkwater?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Counselor Yam?
Yes. In the, in the pream, I was talking about the budget as five oh two point five five and this motion that we are about to vote on is only four fifty. Maybe Mr., through you, Mr. Mayor?
Through Mr. Manager, to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of questions came up. The appropriations that are being voted on by the Counselor are the four hundred and fifty million. The five hundred million dollar number includes the line items at the very bottom of the appropriation order, the cherry sheet assessments, provisions for abatements and exemptions, otherwise known as the overlay, and then the indirect cost of the enterprise funds pursuant to the rules of the Department of Revenue. Those are not appropriations. We include them in here for memo purposes. Those added to the appropriations in the general fund equal the number, which we put in the budget as the, the true cost or the all-in number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch, ah.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gishia?
No.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
No.
Counselor Yam?
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Seven yes.
So, was that?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. In the event that a motion failed, Mr. Clerk, what is the protocol for the next step on the budget? Is it, what the, madam? What we have to publish a, another public hearing? Do we have enough time?
No.
To that?
Motion.
The motion to adopt a budget fail. So what is the next step to, are we gonna, is the manager, will the manager and the CFO needs to do another proposed budget and publish another public hearing to, so to discuss and take vote on it again, because we don't have a budget, we're not adopting a budget tonight?
Yeah, I mean, the Council could continue budget discussions and budget deliberations, the, setting up a new, even a continuation of this meeting. Maybe we could take a five-minute break so that I could speak to the manager and the CFO and see if we, if there's a preference.
I agree. Let's take a fifteen-minute break.
Chris, we're not, we're not done.
Meeting resume please. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Um, Mayor Chau.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Yeah.
Counselor New.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yum.
Here.
Eleven present.
Just a brief summary. Um, after we took the vote to adopt the budget, there was some concern about the, um, the meanings of the, um, the vote that came about, the result of the vote. And the administration need to, uh, discuss among themselves the, under, to interpret, interpret the, the vote. I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Clerk and then Madam Solicitor to explain the vote.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Upon per review of chapter forty-four with the solicitors and stuff, um, the, the necessary vote, um, in order to pass a budget and according to Massachusetts general law is a majority. I was in the incident, it was a super majority because of appropriations. So the budget as, um, will be adopted due to the, um, the number of votes and it's a majority vote.
Madam Solicitor, have anything else to add or was that straightforward now?
No, I mean, the, uh, right, the, the, um, as the, as the clerk has indicated, it would be by majority vote. Um, the, it's understanding, um, the, um, the clerk is looking at a number of these different, um, financial votes, most of which, uh, do require a two-thirds vote. However, uh, in the same way that the line items, uh, to pass with respect to a budget are by a simple majority, the overall, uh, vote then is by a simple majority. And there is in fact only a, uh, a couple of different, uh, aspects of, uh, budget voting that would trigger under the Massachusetts general laws, a two-thirds vote, but the overall passage, uh, would not be one of those.
Before we go through the, uh, the next item on the agenda, we, we are going to, Counselor Janess.
I, I would just like to ask if there's anything that has to be handled tonight or if we can make a motion to table the rest of the agenda until next Tuesday. I don't know if that's gonna have a negative impact on anything or not.
Before we get to that, I just want to make a, a quick comment from up here if you don't mind. Um, I just wanna, uh, thank the administration, the city manager, the CFO, and the entire administration for putting together budget, uh, present tonight. Um, I know it's difficult, uh, difficult for the administration, uh, difficult for all the counselors, uh, difficult, uh, for me as the mayor, it's difficult for many of stakeholders and obviously the, the residents, uh, the business and so forth. Uh, I feel there was a lot of thought that put into it. Um, try to make, make a change in our city. Uh, nobody want to see any cost go up. We don't want to see the price of food go up. We don't want to see the, the price of gas go up. Uh, we don't want to see the cost of bills go up. Um, but when you're talking about an investment in the city, improving city services, um, proving, uh, buildings, improving schools, improving quality of life and, and so forth, it's, it's a tough decision for the administration to put forward and it's a tougher decision for the council to, to vote on, to accept, to discuss, and ultimately we have to answer to the residents and answer to voters. And I hope over the, um, just over discussion tonight, I heard over and over again that the manager, uh, will put forward to make the best use of the funds to truly improve the quality of life for all the residents, um, in, in the city. Um, that is all, um, I have to say. It's difficult for everybody. Um, going back now that we finished that difficult part, um, of the evening, as Counselor Janess, uh, suggested, uh, Counselor Janess suggest that, um, well, let me ask Mr. Clerk and Madam Solicitor actually, Madam Solicitor, if you would table the public hearings, would it affect anything that we have to do on the agenda for any, any things or Mr. Clerk?
If, if I, if I could just comment on it, uh, Mr. Mayor, if, if things were not finished tonight, um, in terms of council rules, then they'd be automatically put on, uh, on the next, um, agenda, which would be a regular scheduled meeting on December fourteenth.
December fourteenth?
I mean, um, June fourteenth.
I know it's late, but it's not that late, Mr. Clerk.
It's late.
And I would like to make that motion to table these items.
I, I personally, before you take a sec, I personally would like to finish the agenda tonight. I kinda like meeting late in the night now, so thank you to Counselor Gitchia for making sure we take the time to take care of each agenda. Um, that said, the motion was by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Gitchia. Um, do we need to take a roll call on that?
We don't.
Just a voice vote on favor, say aye.
Hold on.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to, we'd like to take the opportunity to thank the department heads who hung around and, and all, for all their hard work while they're sitting here. Uh, it is greatly appreciated.
The public here, we should not table them?
If you're gonna do that, might as well just...
Yeah, why don't we do that? Motion, open up public hearings.
Or... And not just finish it?
Yeah.
I think it's better just to...
Yeah, just finish it because there's nobody talking.
Yeah.
There's nobody talking, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's...yeah. I mean, it's the loan orders, it's the problem.
Well, this has been a very interesting night, to say the least. And I think when it comes to the challenges and the uncertainty, this is what we elected to do. Just heard from the clerk and Madam Solicitor, there's some issues with the rules, with the public hearing that's on the agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, there's a couple of, you know, the concerns that they're all public hearings, so they'd all have to be open to continue, so we wouldn't have to go back out and advertise. And the issue is, as the CFO has brought up, there's an issue about the loan orders. Those really have to be precise because they go to general counsel, they go to loan counsel. So my recommendation is we kinda move forward on it.
Okay, I'll draw my motion.
Okay, and I believe that we can move through this pretty quickly.
Sure.
I might have to talk a little bit faster, so...
Do it.
A few...so we finished three point one. We now go to three point two. Vote endorse the five-year capital plan. The session is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. The session is closed. Now open to all that oppose. Open all that oppose. That session is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Janess. Roll call please, Mr. Clerk.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Three point three, loan order, capital plan, loan order. This session is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. That section is closed. Open to all those opposed. Open to all those opposed. That section is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Getchier, second by Counselor Leahy.
And refer to my office.
And refer to the clerk's office. Motion to adopt and refer to the clerk's office. Roll call please, Mr. Clerk.
Who the motion is by?
A motion by Counselor...I think it was Getchier, second by Counselor Leahy.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
No.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
You got me down to yes, right? Three point four, loan order, grand manner judgment. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. That section is closed. Open to all those oppose. Open to all that oppose. That section is closed. Need a motion to adopt and then refer to the clerk's office. Adopt by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Noon. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Three point five, ordinance amend sewer rate fiscal year twenty-three. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. The section is closed. Open to all those oppose. Open all that oppose. That section is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Yum. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
No.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Three point six, ordinance amend water rate fiscal year twenty-three. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. That section is closed. Open to all that oppose. Open to all that oppose. That section is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
No.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Three point seven, ordinance create new position, DPD energy advocate. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. That section is closed. Open to all those oppose. Open to all those oppose. That section is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Yum, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Three point eight, ordinance create new position, DPW facilities and infrastructure project manager. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. That section is closed. Open to all those who oppose. Open to all those oppose. That section is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor...second by Counselor Getchier. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
No.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Mr. Clerk, can you second a motion and vote no in the negative for it?
Yes.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure. Three point nine, ordinance create new position, fire assistant chief. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. This section is closed. Open to all those oppose. Open to all those who oppose. This section is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Mercier. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Last item on the agenda for tonight, three point ten, ordinance create new position, HR generalist. This section is open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. This section is closed. Now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. This section is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Robinson. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mitch Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yum.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Need a motion to adjourn by Counselor Yum, second by Counselor Scott. All in favor, say aye. Post a note, eyes have it. Motion is carried. Congratulations, have a good night. What's that?